City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have three speaker cards for public comment. The first is from Mary Nessel. Following Ms. Wessel is Wendy Weston.
Mary has just walked outside with Albert and Bob Koshat.
Let's take Wendy Weston.
Can I? So, my name is Wendy Weston and I am the treasurer of the Guild of AMWynn Elementary, a public Waldorf school. We're located off of Explorer Drive. We're just on the cusp of the county line there, of the city limits. We're having a walkathon on March 16th and our goal is to raise funds for materials and needs for the Waldorf program that we're fully going to be incorporating next year and then also to work towards a water filtration system. So, I'm just giving you some information for yourself to know. We're going to have about 300-plus kids walking the neighborhood of the Lincoln Village area and then they will, so they'll be doing a two-mile, a three-mile, or a four-mile because an average person has to walk four miles to get clean, useful water in the world. So, we wanted to make it have a experience that they might actually associate with something, a little social science experiment there. And that just kind of tells you if someone you know that is interested in donating funds towards our school fundraiser, they're more than welcomed. And I've also contacted, I just talked to the chief of police, so we're going to kind of work that. I have also left a message with the Sac City Unified, the officer program there so that they know. And then I have parents that are walking with students and whatnot. So, but you're more than welcome to join us. We'd love to have your participation.
Thank you. I'll just throw out there as a former school board member, I'd love to go. I'm going to, I would actually really like to try to make that. It'll be right in between two trips for me, so I'll see if I can go. But definitely I would sponsor, but if I could ask a favor of you, there's a nice lady right back there waving her hand. If you could speak to her, she's our communications director to see if we can't make that work.
Fantastic. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
My next speaker is Edward McCarthy.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Edward McCarthy. I live in Major, California. I'm also an employee of Folsom-Cordova High School District. And I come here tonight just to ask for your support for an event that myself, a teacher at the school district and a member of the Folsom Lake College is wanting to put on next year. The event is actually going to be on March 10th, 2018. But in the meantime, we need to gather support of our cities that would be affected by the event for the purpose of having more than just three members of the community say, hey, let's do this. The Folsom Lake College is where this year's event is going to be held at and the Folsom Lake College governing body, or the board, would like, you know, the blessing of the city as also as a means of backing to say that, you know, it is a serious event and that it's not something that's going to bankrupt the college or cause damage and all that stuff like that. The event will be licensed through Maker Media and so they require insurance for the event, so it's not so much that. But I may, I don't know if this is something that we can talk about or that would have to be a consent item on the next city council meeting or...
Mr. McCarthy, you haven't yet said what the event is.
I'm sorry. I thought I did. I gave the title. I spiked a little faster from New York. It's going to be what's called a mini Maker Fair. And a Maker Fair is basically where people come together and they create things. It could be anything from a robot, it could be a paper airplane, it could involve sewing and crafts, all the way from the basic tactile, stick your hands in and feel how gooey this is, all the way up to a fire-breathing dragon. So, it's something that I feel empowered to bring to the area. I have a friend who recently put one of these events on at the Shasta, well, excuse me, at the city council, city hall in the civic auditorium in Reading. And it was a well-attended event, probably looking at an audience of about 1,800 people, maybe, maybe higher. And I wanted to bring this event to our area, first off, that this year's event would be held at the college. Some children may never see a college, but also to be more inclusive of both the Rancho Cordova area and Folsom area.
You're talking about the college here in Rancho Cordova?
Say that again.
You're talking about the college location here in Rancho Cordova?
The first event will be actually at the campus in Folsom. We would like to use the Rancho Cordova campus as a satellite to bus people or carpool to the campus site itself. Because I'm a Folsom-Cordova employee, I would like it to be more inclusive. We want to, we want to bring the kids from Folsom, excuse me, the kids from Rancho Cordova to Folsom to go to Folsom Lake College, to see the campus, to participate in the event because they, some of them may never see a campus, you know, a college campus.
Okay, then we should ask you to do exactly the same thing that Donald asked the first lady to, and they must have walked outside.
I think they're right outside the door.
Yeah, to talk to our communications director because the city is actually working with Hacker Lab to establish something like that that would have Makerspace in it.
So, a Makerspace is slightly different?
No, I understand.
Okay.
But we are very much involved and invested in the whole concept.
Right.
And so, making sure that we're all coordinating what we're doing. The way to start would be to start with talking to Maria, our communications director.
Great. Thank you for your time.
What was the date on the?
The event will be March 10th, 2018. And this year's event, well, that event will be at Folsom Lake College. Future events could be either at the church along the freeway or at the Folsom Lake College campus in Rancho Cordova. So...
When you say the church along the freeway, what street is it off of? Which, there's a lot of churches off the freeway.
Well, so if I'm driving...
At the post office?
I'm driving west on Highway 50 and right as, right as the road curves, the large church there.
River City Christian.
Yes, thank you. I'm from New York, I'm from the area, so I'm still learning herbs.
It's okay.
There's Cap Christian's just outside of the city, so just making sure.
Yeah. Maria has just walked back in.
Great, thank you.
Another project for you.
My last speaker card is for Mary Nessel. Is Ms. Nessel in the lobby?
Oh, here she comes.
Is she here? Okay.
Yep, here she comes.
We'll wait, Mary.
I didn't know I was going to get asked to step out and it wasn't even for a fight. On subject 13.3, the crossings at Woodbury Project, regrettably, I didn't attend the February meeting where this was first brought up, so I tried to get myself up to speed. And I know as much as everybody wants to see that vacant lot utilized, something positive, and I'm probably too late to influence anybody enough to nix this project. I just think this project is not well, doesn't fit well. It's too big for that property and I noticed that y'all are considering or have decided to make a parking exception. And I know that neighborhood. I've driven in there. I drove by there again tonight before coming here and it's like the overflow of cars from that complex is going to cause a problem in that neighborhood. If I had a business there, I would be objecting. I think there's a vacant office building across the street. If anybody comes to look at that office building thinking of perhaps renting it or leasing it and they see all the cars, if this, if this project gets built first and they see all the cars that are there all the time, it would, I think, cause them not to want to do business there. And I know in my neighborhood, when I go through down West Loma, in just the last year alone, I have noticed that the parking on West Loma and around that first corner on Terra Loma, that used to be no parking, used to be signed no parking on West Loma and there just didn't, there wasn't anybody parking on Terra Loma. Now, they've removed the no parking sign after I made three complaints that people were parking and not being ticketed. So, instead of ticketing them, they removed the no parking sign and there are cars there constantly now. So, no new complexes, no new apartments, but more and more people, more and more families are doubling up how many people are living in one unit. So, you may have only 28 units in this new complex, but I think the number of people that have cars and multiple families or extended families living in these units, they're all going to have more cars than I'm guessing any of you are anticipating and we're going to be creating a problem for that neighborhood with cars, extra cars. And anybody that moves into that location and they've got kids, there's nowhere for kids to play. It's like a concrete jungle there. So, I just think it's a bad project for that location. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to 11. Council report. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very brief report. When, when the city began its support and when the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association actually began and the various youth leagues were deciding what their challenge would be, what their modus operandi would be, one of the challenges that we've seen in other jurisdictions is the preservation of leagues that are going through some turmoil. We actually heard from friends in Folsom that the reason, one of the reasons the Folsom Athletic Association exists is to be sure that none of their leagues sort of fall off the table. Something falls apart and it, and it isn't saved. So, the youth of that community are then lacking that opportunity. And one of the challenges we had similar to that was that we were, we had gaps. We had gaps in the sort of youth sports that were available to kids in Rancho Cordova. And so, excitingly, there are now discussions about three startup youth leagues in Rancho Cordova. The first one is actually, has begun. It's called the Rancho Cordova Jets and it is a passing-only football league. So, think of a flag football-like scenario, but it heavily, heavily, heavily relies on passing skills. So, you get a lot of the, a lot of the sort of football energy without the risk of football and it's sort of an alternative to, to the junior programs that are out there for regular football. It hasn't, it's attracted quite a few people signing up. It's apparently a success and it is spawned, I should say, also from the city's investment in Cordova High's football program. This is basically a spinoff league supported by them to enable yet more players to be ready to play football at a higher level. So, we're really excited about that at RCA. The other report from RCA is that there are, there's two other leagues that are either formed and growing or about to form. Rugby in Rancho Cordova has not been a youth league. They have been a club team for our community and they now have funding for a full-time coordinator to build a youth league. So, that's a very exciting change that we will see over the next 12 months in Rancho Cordova, as well as a basketball program that is originally based at River City Christian that that church is now interested in taking citywide by using middle schools at Mitchell and Mills, utilizing those gyms, those facilities to have a citywide youth basketball program that really has not existed before. So, in three areas, I just want to report back to the council that the RCA is making great progress for youth sports in our community and providing some really neat recreation options. And that's the total of my report.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you. Well, the rain this year being followed by the sun is coming up. We're going to have next week or so, it's going to get up to the 70 range. And we're talking about the mosquito vet control board and the mosquitoes are getting very busy and hungry. So, you want to do the district Ds, you have to drain dawn and dusk because the time to have some cover clothes, so you're not going to get bitten too well. Dress appropriately, like I said, defend yourself with repellents. Doors and window screens should be in good working condition. So, if they're not, you'd be very happy if you keep them in good condition because bites are not really fun. And district personnel are always available. You can reach them on the telephone number of 800-429-1022 or on the website of www.fightthebyte.net. They're going to be having, you start working on that pretty soon to report dead birds, but not yet. I think that'll be in April and I'll let you know on that when I have the exact date. I don't have that yet. And the only other thing I have right now is I'm an alternate for the sanitation district and we're going to have a good report tonight on what's going on with them. Dan, our regular sanitation district city representative is getting better and we're looking forward to him being able to do everything again in full gore. So, I'm looking forward to seeing him doing that. But looking forward to the report tonight. So, that's all I've got.
Okay. Linda? Well, I feel like my husband and I spent the majority of the last three weeks sort of sheltering in place trying to get rid of a cold, but I still managed to come up with a list of things that we, that I've finally been able to do. At Regional Transit, you probably read, they have a very large strategic planning effort that has kicked off and it isn't really strategic planning so much as the staff taking the opportunity to give the board members a very good explanation of sort of the state of regional transit, which isn't too bad, all things considered. But now that we all have this basic level of information about both the facilities and the services as well as what they call state of good repair, the way in which the efforts to try to curtail fare evasion and some of those efforts are really paying off, then we probably have a good foundation now to continue to discuss that, to continue to discuss further progress at Regional Transit. Last week, of course, was Read Across America Week and I know a lot of us spent some time reading in the schools. On Tuesday, we were blessed with coverage over at Cordova Meadows because Tuesday was the day that Rancho Cordova, for the third year, has given out small books to all of the kids in elementary schools in Rancho Cordova. And we had a great time giving, giving these kids books. It was just delightful. I went to Peter Shields on Thursday and read and then I went to, back to Cordova Meadows on Friday and read. City manager and I met with our new postmaster. We have a new gentleman whose name is Neil Gonzalez. He's actually been in the postal service about 15 or 17 years, something like that, with a lot of experience and he's come up here from Stockton. And he seems like maybe we are going to have a little more community participation from the postal service than we've had for the last 10 or 15 years. He's very interested in trying to help curtail the ridiculous mail theft that is going on in all of our group mailboxes that are being installed in the new areas. And yes, Albert, he's interested in looking at the new boxes that we've been talking about that are more secure than others have been in the past. They're interested in participating in schools. When we have elementary schools who have like career days and they'd like to have somebody who's a postal carrier come out and talk, they'd like to do that. They have, and he was full of tips on how to file complaints, issues that they're going, issues that they're dealing with and his plans to spruce up the physical appearance of our post office, which really needs it.
Did you say spruce up the post office?
Yes.
That was, I was approached by some community members who were interested in volunteering time to clean up the post office.
Well...
And I, and I thought that was unfortunate that they had to do such, make such an offer.
However, if any of him has any landscape talent, he could use some assistance and I can give you his email address and his phone number later if you want to connect these people with him. That would be a very good idea. Mayor and I had a two-by-two with Sacramento County. One of the things that we do routinely is meet with all of our service providers and we started doing this years ago and we always talk about certain issues of importance. And I know that you won't be surprised to know, considering that the, considering the topics on our agenda today, that the majority of what we talked about was the issue of homelessness here in Sacramento County. Friday, I went to memorial service up in Lincoln for a gentleman that so many of us knew. He'd served on the city council in Lincoln for a long time. Tom Cosgrove passed away very abruptly. He was only 68 and they did a wonderful service for him up at 12 Bridges, attended by somewhere between 150 and 200 people. People, probably the whole town of Lincoln seemed like it was there, but also people from throughout the region because Tom had also chaired SECOG for a year and was a longtime member representing Lincoln at SECOG. I went to only the first hour of Cork and Fork, so I'm not going to talk about that. There's a couple of fun things coming up in Rancho Cordova and I think the thing that, that's probably the most fun, on Thursday night here at 5:45, all the bicyclers in town, all the cyclists are encouraged to meet over at Steve's Pizza and then cycle over to the American River Brewing Company. It's part of Beer Fest and this is Bikes and Beer Ride from Steve's Pizza to American River Brewery. So, way to have fun, get some exercise and give yourself a reward at the end of the time. And then finally, I want to give, I want to give a shout out of appreciation to, to our wonderful administrative assistant Stacy Leitner. She was in Tucson this past week for a very significant conference, which I will let Cyrus talk about, but Stacy took the time to go and spend some time with my mom yesterday morning and they had a great visit. Mom had run out of ice cream and Stacy stopped at the grocery store and took her ice cream and they really had a terrific time and I thoroughly appreciate the fact that Stacy wanted to take the time to do that. So, Cyrus, thank you.
Thank you. Like Linda mentioned, I got to one Reading Across America. I was invited to a handful, but schedules just didn't line up. But I did get to go over to Cordova Meadows and read to some very anti-fifth graders, but I had a good time. But you could tell it was the end of the week and they were, I was, I was the one between them and I think their recess. We didn't have an air quality district meeting a week before last, but we did hold a budget and personnel committee meeting and got an update. For those of you who, I think everyone should be aware that Larry Green is retiring in the end of June, so we're in the process right now of replacing the executive director or air pollution control officer position. So, if anybody knows anybody that knows how to run air districts, now's your chance. So, that job has posted. I believe we're scheduled to do first rounds of interviews in like two weeks. Like Linda attended the Cork and Fork, stayed a little bit longer than an hour. It was, it was very impressive. So, the last couple of years, it's been on the same night as the Volunteer Awards. So, I've usually popped into the VIP reception and then left in time to come over here for that. So, it was nice to actually stay a little bit longer. The one plug I'll give, if any of you haven't had, can't remember what, the new meadery that just opened here is that, that they brew mead, but it's not what you think. It's not like wine. They actually, it's carbonated, so it's like a cider. So, that was very impressive because I've had mead before and I was, I even told him, once I drank the first, I'm like, I didn't think this is what you were going to give me. And he looks at me and goes, so you're expecting it to be bad? I go, yeah. Did join Linda at the two-by-two with the county. The subject that we're going to be talking about shortly did come up and we got a good briefing from the county executive and other folks. Also had the two-by-two with Folsom-Cordova, talked through Measure H and some of Debbie's expectations as far as those proposals that are coming in. We also got an update as far as the superintendent search. Just a couple of things that are coming up that I'll report more on. Next week is the inaugural regional executive, I don't know what they're calling, regional executive leadership meeting in DC. This is area mayors and CEOs are going to be going to do a cap-to-cap-like trip with the Asian Chamber of Region Business and a few other folks. And that's coming up, leaving Sunday for that. And then also we'll be attending the local government commission's winter meeting in Yosemite, which is the end of that week. So, put it all together.
The Awani principles.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, the renaming of...
They're going to celebrate the Awani principles. I went and spoke to it one year about Blueprint. Blueprint was brand new.
Yeah. And don't, don't ask me what hotel I'm staying at because they've changed all the names and I don't really understand anymore.
It's all right.
I'm not staying at the Awani. I'm staying at whatever the other one is, but I don't know what that's called anymore either.
Yosemite Lodge.
Is that what it's called now?
No, but we all know what it is anyway.
I think, I think that's the one, but I don't know what it's called anymore. And then looking forward to opening day, I think Linda, you're reading the names again, I saw.
Yeah.
But I'll be, I'll be playing double duty because I'm also now a coach for my son's team.
International names, it's wonderful.
Should be...
I'm out of town too, sorry.
That's okay.
The two of you will be out of town, right? Yeah, I fly out the next day. So, some fun stuff coming, coming ahead.
Yeah, actually Saturday is not the issue for me. It is much easier to read the names of all of our wonderful players than it's going to be the week following when I have to throw out the pitch for girls' softball and I have to get Agnes to teach me how to do that wild, wacky underhand throw.
And yeah, see, I'm out of town, so yeah.
See, you're out of town.
It was interesting Rod actually mentioned that to me and I looked at it on my calendar and I said Linda's going to get to do that.
Beware the underhand throw.
Oh, God.
Can I do that at Little League?
It's a, no.
It's a killer.
Yeah, it's a killer.
No, I, and what's so awful, I mean, fortunately, there's nobody here in this room who saw me, but the last time I had to do this, the ball went wee, blop, about two feet away. It was awful.
It's all in good fun. And so long as you're not, I think, Mike Tyson or Baba Booie from Howard Stern, you'll probably do better. Those are the two worst I've ever seen. Anyways, and with that, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to highlight a couple of recent publications. First one is the, let me, let me start with the most recent issue of the Comstock Magazine. If you haven't seen it, it has a 20-page insert focused on Rancho Cordova, wonderfully done, very professionally done, highlights the strengths of the community and all the great things that we have to offer. So, I encourage our residents to take a look at this publication and read it. And thank you, our communication team, for the great work that went behind it to, to make it. to make it happen. The other publication that I would like to highlight is, uh, the most recent, uh, the March issue of the Western Cities Magazine. And, uh, and guess what's on the cover? Our own, our very own Mather Veterans Village is on the cover of this magazine. And, uh, you almost, almost about half of the magazine is dedicated to, uh, to the Mather Veterans Village and the, the great work and the great service that we have provided to our veterans community. So wanted to acknowledge that and also thank our communication team for the work, uh, that they did to make that happen. And lastly, I, as Councilmember Budge mentioned, uh, we highly encourage our city council members and staff to participate in professional organizations. And, uh, as she pointed out, um, our executive, my executive assistant Stacy Leitner has been serving as, uh, a board member for the International Association of Administrative Professionals, a very esteemed position to be serving that. Our own city clerk also serves on another board and, uh, she was, um, attending a board meeting in Tucson, Arizona, where she had the opportunity to meet, uh, Linda's mother. So, uh, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And with that, and Owen, thank you for letting me know about the magazines. I actually looked at, I didn't even notice the cover of that one. I got those today. Um, so with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. Consent calendar-
I have a question. Are we going to have the report from about sanitation district now or are we going to do it later?
Later.
Let's see where it is. It's, it's, it's on here. No, it's, it's one of the, it's the, yeah.
Yeah.
It's later. Yeah, it's not, it wasn't under presentation. Uh, so consent public, consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item. For individual considerations, all items will be approved by one motion. Do they have any items that need to be pulled?
Um, actually I'm going to ask us to pull, um, item 13.3 since we have public comment about it and we'll ask a couple of questions about it.
Okay.
So I will move the balance-
Excuse me, I also, I'd like to make one quick statement about, um, item number 13, 13.2. The amendment to the municipal code. The exhibit to that amendment is the same exhibit as appeared as exhibit A in item 11.1, uh, two on your 221 city council meeting. Uh, and just for the record, wanted to clarify that, that exhibit is available in that place before the council and at this meeting.
Thank you. So I will move the balance of our consent calendar, item, uh, 13.1 through 13.9 with the exception of 13.3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Schockland is absent.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to 13.3.
Ask her to read it into the record.
Item 13.3 is crossings at Woodbury Project number DD 9683 located at 2738 Woodbury Way, formerly 10447 Folsom Boulevard. The proposed project includes a rezone from commercial mixed-use CMU FBSP and high-density residential HDR FBSP to residential mixed-use RMU FBSP via a Folsom Boulevard specific plan amendment, a parking exception, and a major design review for the three-story multifamily buildings to include a total of 28 affordable units, parking, landscaping, and play area on .97 acre site located within the Folsom Boulevard specific plan.
Thank you, Mindy. So, um, just a couple of real specific questions, and I'm sorry, I just don't remember. And I realize that this is a second reading, so it normally would just be a routine matter, um, which is why it's on consent calendar. I don't actually remember what the justification for the parking reduction was. And, um, thinking about the site plan, I can remember the layout of the buildings, but I don't remember whether there was, uh, specific, um, open space, playground space the way there was in the original project, which we built several years ago. So could you remind us all of that?
Sure. Uh, good evening, Mayor. There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Stefan Heisler, analyst for the Economic Development Department. I'll answer the second question first. So there is, so if you can think of it as a rectangle-
Right.
-at the north end on this side, um, the buildings are closer to Folsom Boulevard and then between the two, the old project and the new project, there is a playground space in the northwest corner of the site.
So it's, um, um, the north, uh, prop, our parcel line, um, had, um, half a dozen car, uh, carports or garages on that, that side adjacent to the original project. So this was over in that corner between the garages and the, um, uh, residential, uh, commercial residential property line next door to it?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, is it a playground or picnic area or barbecue or what?
It's a playground.
Okay. So, um, how about the parking space? What is the reduction?
So, yeah. I'm not the planning department, but I was closely involved with the project. So the parking requirement, I believe, was either two or 2.1 spaces per unit. Um, that was reduced to affordable housing projects. Then we requested a reduction further to 1.6 spaces per unit. Uh, we did that based on a couple, um, options through the code. So in the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, there is a, um, provision for exceptions. And so that's the one that we use primarily. And then also in the zoning code, there is, um, there's another provision for, um, basically exceptions.
Sure. Well, and, and exceptions are typically things like the fact that there's a bus stop out front, you know, that, that kind of thing. There is public transfer, there actually is public transportation now available again on Folsom Boulevard.
So the exception that we used was, um, under the specific, the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, which, um, allows the exceptions if we can't strictly adhere to the, the plan, but we meet this, the, basically the spirit of the specific plan. In this project, it was financially infeasible to increase or decrease the parking spaces any further.
I understand. So that, um, if you just do the, the 28 units times 1.6, you get 44.8 parking spaces. So in the 28 units, remind us, um, how many, um, efficiency, one bedroom, two bedroom, whatever?
Mm-hmm. So there are nine three bedrooms and the balance are two bedrooms, so 19 two bedrooms.
Do you have another question? I had a question.
So, um, yeah, you could easily take up 38 of those spaces if the, just the two-bedroom unit had two cars. And that doesn't count the three-bedroom units. I understand.
Vice Mayor Budge, Reed Florrie, manager, reinvestment division. Actually, the parking ratio for, uh, this project before you is slightly higher than the crossings at New Rancho. Uh, it was a similar concern, parking was a similar concern in New Rancho. And we worked with the owner and the management company to actually, um, I, I believe we actually gave preference to folks who would limit themselves to two cars. Uh, it may not have been a formal preference, but we have watched that and we're not aware of, uh, parking impaction associated with our project. We've been, the management company has been very vigilant in that. And we would expect the same, if not better, on this project.
Will this be managed by the same people?
Yes, and owned by the same people.
Do you want to ask?
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, isn't one of the exceptions the fact that this is, that this is deemed affordable housing and traditionally the, the typical resident is not going to have two vehicles? That most studies would tell you that, that they require far less parking because they don't possess a, as many vehicles?
Right, that's, that's part of it as well.
So, um, does the management company do things like they do in apartments where, um, you have to register your vehicles and you're not allowed to have old decrepit anything sitting around?
This will be gated, I believe, uh, as was crossings one, and there is a, um, a strict, uh, must-be operational policy in place. Uh, there's no changing of oil, there's no maintenance on the blacktop. It's, uh, it's a-
No gate on this one?
Oh, there is, excuse me, I'm informed there is no gate on this one, on this project. But, uh, there was, uh, quite attentive, uh, policies associated with auto maintenance.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay.
I'm curious as to why no gate now that that issue's been raised.
That was looked at very closely by the fire department or planning department and the developers and the architects. Um, there are requirements on the amount of queuing space that you have off of the entrance so that people aren't queuing on Woodbury Way. And we were not able to make enough queuing space without losing a couple of parking spaces.
David, you gotta have enough room to, to, um, to get off, to get out of the road. Um, and actually normally, if you're in a subdivision, normally the, the requirement is something really big like 60 feet.
I mean, we accomplished this next door. It's making difficulty understanding why we couldn't accomplish it here.
Well-
The downside is, of course, a lack of security and that is a problem at all apartment complexes, but even more so in an affordable complex.
Right. Well, this is on the, on the, the knuckle. This is right on the-
It's at the turn, it's at the, it's at the very end of the street.
The curve. Yeah. Which makes it even more of a challenge.
If you have too much queuing, then it's going to block the other entrance to the other complex, right?
Uh, no, the other, the other entrance is on Croweito.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the top of, at Croweito and-
And then we're down in the knuckle of Woodbury.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff?
No question. I'm just, um, gonna say that I'm glad that they were able to work it out, to have that done. I know we were planning on having the senior citizens, um, there. And then, and that didn't work because of the tax and the, uh, tax credits and all that. So we're able to get this other done. And I'm glad that we're going to have that, um, done there in that empty lot. It is something that has been in the mill for years, as we all know. And so I'm glad that we're going to have this, uh, which will be really, um, well-managed and the owner is not going to let anything do it, you know, to really mess things up with that piece of property. It's theirs and the, the people really do take care of it and they watch. And, um, that's what we need. So thank you.
So I really understand the concern. And balance, this is, the architecture is very handsome. We're trying so hard to clean up that area and, um, the experience with the original project has been so positive. So, um, I'm going to go ahead and move approval of, uh, the second reading of 13.3.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second then.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Schockland is absent.
Thank you.
But I really want to appreciate the fact that you came to speak about it. I think we were all probably surprised and nobody came to speak about it before.
And with that, uh, we have no consent public hearing items, we have no public hearing items. We'll move on to regular calendar items and, uh, which would be 16.1 and it's a presentation by the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency on the proposed reprioritation of recaptured housing choice vouchers and the allocation of those vouchers for two years to homeless families and individuals. And we have our presenters.
If I may, Reed Florrie, uh, reinvestment division. We are fortunate this evening to have, uh, from SHRA, the assistant director, Sarah Thomas. I threatened to call her Stefan, but I'm sorry. Uh, we also understand, Steph also understands that, uh, Mr. Lake will, from the county, may, might be joining us if he's not already here. The issue to be discussed is basically the, the smaller issue of the reallocation of vouchers and if Mr. Lake is here, maybe the big, bigger issue of county strategy related to homelessness.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, Vice Mayor Budge, and members of the council. My name is Sarah Thomas and I am the assistant director with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and I oversee the housing choice voucher program. I thank you very much for allowing us to be here today to present information to you regarding serving the homeless, uh, through housing authority programs. I would also like to, uh, introduce to you my boss, LaChelle Dozier. She is the executive director who's sitting in the audience. To provide some context for this meeting, on January 24th, at a county board of supervisors' meeting, the Sacramento Housing Authority was asked to explore and solicit feedback on options to reduce homelessness utilizing housing authority resources. The goal of my presentation today is to share with you information about SHRA, who we are and what we do, provide an overview of our housing authority programs, and review options available to serve homeless families. We hope to receive input from you regarding your thoughts and the various options to help advise the agency as we develop our recommendations to present to the board of supervisors on March the 21st. SHRA is a joint powers authority and we work in both the city and the county. We administer federal, state, and local programs to serve the needs of low and extremely low-income families in Sacramento. Our mission is to revitalize communities, provide affordable housing opportunities, and to serve as the housing authority for the city and county of Sacramento. The housing authority is and always has been the core entity of our agency to provide for the housing needs of Sacramento residents, and we've provided these services for the past 77 years. We finance affordable housing using local and federal funds. Sacramento is the fifth largest housing authority in California and SHRA is among the top 20 in size nationwide, around amongst 3,400 housing authorities nationwide. We are also one of the largest rental housing landlords in Sacramento County and the housing authority owns and manages approximately 2,700 housing units. With both programs, we house approximately 50,000 residents every day. This is the core of what we do. We provide housing to extremely low-income families. I'd like to take a few minutes to share with you some key information regarding the main housing authority programs at our agency. The housing choice voucher program, or formerly called Section 8, and public housing. The housing choice voucher program, or HCV for shorts, for short, um, is a program where the family has a choice to find a unit anywhere in Sacramento County on the private market. The family pays 30% of their income towards rent and the remainder is paid to the landlord with funds received from HUD. When I refer to a family, please note that based on the HUD definition, I'm referring to both an individual as well as more than one member in the household. With the housing choice voucher program, we serve over 12,000 families. The average household size is three members and many of the households have a disabled family member. The average annual income for families on the program is less than $15,000. We are serving the hardest-to-house families and, but for this type of housing would be homeless. Currently, we are fully leased up and the only way we can serve new families is when vouchers become available when families leave the program. This is what we call turnover vouchers. What causes turnover vouchers? Families leave the program for various reasons. Some pass away, some are self-sufficient and they pay their rent on their own, and some cannot meet the requirements of the program. Currently in HCV, we have an average of approximately 600 vouchers on an annual basis. It is these turnover vouchers that we are looking at how best to serve homeless families. Do keep in mind that whatever option we decide to serve homeless families with, utilizing the voucher is mainly a market-driven strategy. The housing authority provides a voucher to the family, but the family is responsible to find a unit in the rental market where the voucher will be accepted. rental market, where the voucher will be accepted. Also, this is a voluntary program for our landlords. Public housing. Unlike the Housing Choice Voucher Program, where families take a voucher and find a unit in the private market, public housing is where the Housing Authority owns and manages the development, and families move into these affordable units. We serve over 2,700 families, and the average family size is three, and many of the households have children. The average income on the program is $12,800 annually. Our public housing units are also leased up, and we have an average turnover of approximately 200 units per year. So, between both the programs, we have an approximate turnover of 800 vouchers and units annually. So, how does a family apply and receive housing? All families receive Housing Authority assistance, whether through a voucher or public housing, or selected off a waiting list. There are a total of 11 waiting lists that families can sign up on, five for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and six for public housing. There are 70,000 unduplicated families currently waiting on these lists. Clearly, there's a great deal, great need for affordable housing here in Sacramento. Some of our waiting lists are open, and some of them are closed. I did pass to Ms. Copya, a copy of frequently asked questions, and there is information on the various waiting lists available for you. We also have preferences that help families on the waiting list. What that means is that in order to reach the most vulnerable families, we have prioritized applicants on our waiting lists in order to reach these families. Some of the priorities currently are to serve veterans and disabled families. Currently, on the HCV program, there is one general HCV waitlist, where the family goes out into the community and finds a unit in Sacramento County. This list is currently closed. There are four open waiting lists that serve families who live in site-specific developments, known as project-based developments. An example of that was the high-rise that was shown to you on the very first slide. That is the project called Seventh and H, which is at the corner of Seventh and H in Sacramento. And that is a project-based development where services are provided at the site. Another example of project-based development is Mather Veterans Village here in Rancho, Cordova. At the site-specific developments, a subsidy is tied to the unit, and the family stays in these complexes if they want to receive the assistance. We have approximately 675 families living in these developments. In public housing, while it is similar to the HCV program, to an extent, in public housing, when approved, they move into units where we own and manage the developments. And families move into the right-sized units based on their family size. In public housing, you can sign up for public housing on six different waiting lists. If you want to sign up, if anybody is interested in signing up onto the waiting list, you have to go to www.sacwaitlist.com. To summarize, the HCV and public housing programs currently are fully leased up, but we do have cumulatively an average of 800 vouchers and units available to the Housing Authority on an annual basis. And we are here today because HUD gives us options to serve homeless, and both the city and the county are interested in utilizing Housing Authority resources to serve homeless families. As you all know, we do have a significant number of homeless individuals and families who are needing housing. According to the Sacramento 2015 point-in-time count, there are approximately 2,700 families experiencing homelessness, and most probably the count is higher. Since 2005, the redevelopment agency, the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency, has partnered with the city, county, and other agencies, and has invested approximately $178 million for homeless rental housing. Currently, we contribute $16 million annually to serve the homeless. At this time, I would like to share with you options that are available through HUD to serve homeless. I will go through the four of them in detail after first listing them. So, the four options we have are the general homeless preference, the limited homeless allocation, site-specific, or the project-based allocation, and what we call the move-on allocation. The general preference applies to both the Housing Choice Voucher and public housing. I'll start with the left and move to the right. The left column shows the current waitlist, where the green color represents families on the waiting list. This includes the elderly, disabled, families with children. And amidst these families, we also have homeless families as well, which we have shown in blue. With the general preference to homeless families, the waiting list is reordered to prioritize families who are on the waiting list who are also homeless. HUD requires us to serve families who meet the new preference on our waiting list first. So, we would have to ask all the families, the 70,000 families that we have on our waiting list, and if they meet the criteria, then they move up to the top. So, this is shown by the blue families on the top, who are given priority. Next, if the waiting list is opened, families, new homeless families coming off the streets would be prioritized next, and that's seen by the yellow-orange color right underneath the blue. They are placed ahead of those who aren't homeless and are on our waiting list, and those are the green families that are further down on the list. So, non-homeless families on the waiting list would be placed below homeless families with this option. Also with this option, homeless families can self-certify that they are homeless. They can self-certify from the streets here, or they might be coming from another jurisdiction and could self-certify. Do keep in mind that the Housing Authority has funds for rental subsidies only, and so homeless families who receive a voucher through this option are not tied to services, which they may need. The second option is the limited preference option. This approach would allow the Housing Authority to establish a set number of turnover vouchers or units to be utilized for the homeless. The column on the left is the same as the previous slide, where the green represents families on our waiting list, including the elderly, disabled, and families with children. Amidst these families, we have some homeless families, shown in blue on the left side, with a limited preference, which is in the red box. First priority, again, is to the homeless families on the waiting list, followed by homeless families off the street. However, there is an option to also continue to serve families on the waiting list who are waiting for housing, which is shown in green. With this approach, families are referred to the Housing Authority by a partnering homeless service agency, and these families are linked to services and essential supports up front before receiving the voucher, which could include housing location and case management assistance, and could possibly include assistance for security deposits as well. We believe these services are essential to support families to find, stabilize, and maintain housing. As mentioned earlier, the Housing Authority can only provide rental subsidies. Partnering agency staff are currently exploring options to fund the support services, and based on estimates that were provided by the county in January to the Board of Supervisors, it is estimated that it will cost $7,800 per family per year to provide such services, which is estimated to be approximately $1.5 million to serve 200 families. The third option is what we call the site-based development or project-based allocation. This option is for the Housing Choice Voucher site. As mentioned earlier, we have some of our 12,000 vouchers where the subsidy is tied to the unit currently. And what this means is that the family moves into the subsidized units, and they don't go out into the private rental market to find a unit. In a sense, it is similar to public housing, but with the site-specific project-based units, they are privately owned and managed. Here in Sacramento, we provide families access to services at these developments, such as at Seventh and H. At Mather Veterans Village, as you all know, there are services provided by the VA as well as by the Veterans Resource Center. These vouchers are available currently in eight housing developments around the city and county, and they are also listed on the sheet provided to you. If some of the turnover vouchers are allocated to project basing units, developers are able to build new units or rehabilitate existing units to house homeless families. This is another option that is available to utilize some of the turnover vouchers. While this is not an overnight solution, it is a long-term option that is available. The last option here is called, what we call the move-on allocation, and this is for a defined number of families. And this is where homeless families who are currently in permanent supportive housing, where they receive housing and intensive services, can transition to receive an HCV voucher, if they don't need those wraparound services anymore. We would work closely with existing service providers and property management companies at the developments to identify these families, but this in turn frees up the availability of permanent supportive housing to help the families that really need the intensive case management services. This concludes my presentation, and be glad to answer any questions you may have. And as mentioned earlier, we're looking for, we're requesting your feedback that we can take back to the Board of Supervisors on March the 21st.
Thank you very much. So, council, I guess we have kind of two ways to approach this. We have some representatives from the city of Sacramento and from the county that would like to speak on and present some other information that's going to be coming up with the hearing that the county and the city are going, and the city of Sacramento are going to have later this month. Would you like to hear from both of those representatives first, or would you like to ask questions of this presenter now?
Let's, let's ask a couple of questions so that we know exactly what...
Go ahead.
So, please, it's in our staff report, and I know you said it at the beginning, but after all that information, please go back and remind us exactly what the request is, and how, how implementing that request would impact the four different programs you've just talked about.
At the meeting in January, at the Board of Supervisors meeting, our Executive Director, LaChelle Dozier, was asked to ask all the various cities, and to also go to the public, and to find out what option or combination of options would be the preference for the community. So, the reason we are here today is to provide these options. They're not all mutually exclusive, but to seek input so that we can form a recommendation when we go to the Board of Supervisors on March the 21st.
But to clarify, the general homeless option was the one that the city of Sacramento passed a resolution for? I see, Hyde's not, we will get to the city in a sec.
Yes, I'm sure the city staff will clarify that. The city, right currently at this point, the voucher program is currently administered through the county of Sacramento. And so, the Housing Authority of the county of Sacramento, so the resolution that was presented by the city was related to the public housing units, and there are a large number of the public housing units that are located within the city, and the resolution was that all of the turnover vouchers in the city of public housing would be allocated to the homeless, and they were providing a recommendation that the board also look to allocate all of the turnover vouchers, the HCV vouchers, to the homeless. That was a recommendation to the board.
So, just to clarify again, then, the vouchers are the public, are the 800 turnover vouchers from the public housing, which is the site-specific, project-based allocation?
No, there are a total of 800, on average, turnover. 200 of those are public housing, which is the properties that we own and manage.
Okay, so it's taking 800 from all four programs?
Well, we currently only have an HCV and a public housing program. These are new options that are out there to serve the homeless with the 800 vouchers. So, currently, we don't have a general preference.
Okay, so you're making the leap to, we would use the vouchers. You're assuming that everyone is gonna agree to take the turnover vouchers and use them for something else?
Well, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I did not mean to say that. What I meant to say was that if they were allocated. What I'm trying to say is that we are here to receive input to decide if, in fact, what would be recommended on March the 21st of these options, and also if all of the vouchers would be allocated.
These are the four options.
These are the four options, and it could be all, or none, or a combination of the turnover vouchers that could be allocated.
But the, okay, so these are four programs that you would use them for?
Correct.
No, they're four strategies to allocating the extras.
Yes, these are four strategies that could be utilized for the turnover vouchers, whether it's all the turnover vouchers or some of the turnover vouchers.
Okay, but it's, right, but you're still saying, you're still saying that the 800 turnover vouchers would be used for these four options?
What I, what I was trying to say was that the maximum we have available is the 800. That's the turnover we have maximum. So, it could be a portion, or it could be all, and we're here to receive your own input for these four various strategies.
Maybe I could, these thing, these four that are in front of us, correct, the affected programs are on the right, the left are the strategies in which you would allocate those programs.
Correct, yeah.
And we have vouchers for those programs. These are different ways of prioritizing who gets them.
They are different ways. You can either allocate them for project basing them, where they're site-specific. You could allocate some of them if you wanted to, or provide input in terms of for the move-on, or for a limited preference, or a general preference. So, they're just different options for the maximum of the 800 that we have.
Okay, then, in the public housing, which is the project-based, right?
No, public housing is totally different. It's where we, our agency...
You've got two lists of, you've got two lists of housing here. Okay. So, Phoenix Park, is it Franklin and Fruit Ridge, Franklin and Florin? That's the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And the thing called Sabre Croxona is up at Cerna Village?
Cerna Village is the Sabre Croxona, yes.
Okay. And so, county public housing then is defined as some of those 2,700 units that you all own all over Sacramento County, including here in Rancho, Cordova. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And you've talked about Seventh and H. Where are, let's see, Marina Vista is the new name for what's, a portion of which is adjacent to the old city cemetery?
Correct.
Where are Alder Grove and Twin Rivers?
I'm gonna have LaChelle, that's not my department, I'm gonna have LaChelle.
Alder Grove is Dos Rios.
I think it is.
Donald says.
Yeah, Alder Grove is actually the one adjacent to the cemetery, and Marina Vista is on CV Circle, so it's kind of around the corner.
Right behind it, sort of, okay.
Yes.
All right.
And then Twin Rivers is the old Dos Rios, when you're coming across Highway 160, you know, to the immediate right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Nope, okay. So, with that, thank you very much.
Actually, I do have one question.
Okay.
Throughout your presentation, you said families. Vast majority of the homeless that all of us see on a regular basis are individuals, not families. Is an individual a family?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So, with that, we'll have some representatives from the city of Sacramento. And for all the presenters, please stick around, because I'm sure we're gonna have some other questions as we get into the conversation.
Thank you.
Just state your name and your...
Hey, thanks, Mayor Terry, members of the council. My name is Emily Halken. I am the Homeless Services Coordinator for the city of Sacramento. I work out of the office of the city manager, and we really appreciate the opportunity to come here and your interest in delving into this, as noted, very complex topic. I want to give you a little bit of background from the city's perspective about how we got to where we are and where we're looking to get to. about how we got to where we are and where we're looking to get to. As Sarah mentioned, on January 31st, there was a joint meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Sacramento City Council. And at that meeting, the City Council, the Sacramento City Council, passed two motions. The first, as Sarah mentioned, was a motion to direct SHRA to reallocate those public housing units, the built housing units that are controlled by the city, about 1,700 of them, to reallocate the turnover of those units to folks experiencing homelessness. And then we asked the county to do the same thing with the housing choice vouchers, which are currently in their control. As Sarah went through all of the four different options, I just wanted to highlight, from the city's perspective, our preference is to create a limited preference for folks experiencing homelessness, as well as folks at risk of homelessness for the next two years, coupled with intensive services to be funded through the city, county, and hopefully other partners. Within this request, we have asked SHRA to delineate some of those turnover vouchers to project basing to help spur some new development, like the Mather Veterans Village and other new development hopefully coming down the road with the No Place Like Home. And also to create a move-on program, which Sarah described. It's really an ability to move folks who are currently living in intensively supported, permanent supportive housing, who no longer need or desire that level of services and are stable, but do need long-term housing. It allows us to move them out of that intensely serviced unit and re-occupy that same unit with those services to somebody currently experiencing homelessness. So, as SHRA works on the technical aspects of reallocating the vouchers and the public housing units, the city has been working on some of the necessary services that we understand are, are important, both to support the people moving from homelessness into housing, but also to support people before they ever become homeless. Is there, can I use this?
Yep. Give it just a sec.
Okay. So, subsequent, okay, good. So, subsequent to the joint meeting of the board and the council, our city council held a workshop a couple of weeks ago on February the 21st, really to allow us to dive deeper into both of these issues, both the prevention of folks and then the services for, for folks to support the housing efforts that SHRA is leading up. So, this is a diagram that the council talked through, and I'm happy to, to walk through it in details a lot here. But what I really wanted to show is this diagram represents the system of care, the homeless system of care that we are working to create in partnership with Sacramento Steps Forward, the county, all of the other cities and our nonprofit partners in the community. And so, the vouchers that Sarah spent so much time speaking about really are here at this end. PHA means Public Housing Authority, my apologies for the acronyms. But we also recognize the importance of the other ends of this diagram. So, at the left end here, um, is really creating a purposeful program to prevent people from becoming homeless. You'll hear this called prevention, you'll hear it called diversion. But really, the objective here is to have services and supports to keep people out of ever becoming homeless, at the last place we want people to have to, to fall into. And then also recognizing the need, as Sarah pointed out, to have the flexible supportive services to accompany the housing units. We recognize that we're asking SHRA to take on housing some of our most vulnerable constituents. And we want to support them with wraparound services. And those services can include everything from outreach and engagement, case management to meet the person where they're at, regardless of their situation, and an ongoing housing support. And because it was brought up in Sarah's, I think it's important to point out that as we envision housing supportive services, this can include both non-financial supportive services, like landlord-tenant mediation, a 24/7 tenant hotline if the landlord has an issue, as well as some financial incentives to the landlord, both to incentivize their willingness to participate in a program and to provide protection should there ever be an issue with a client at the back end. We recognize in our tight rental market that it's really critical, not just to ensure that we can secure units on an open market, we are going to be competing with folks who, who don't have the same challenges as our population does, but also to really protect, incentivize, and appreciate the landlords who are asking to take a risk here. So, recognizing that all of this I described, preventing people from coming into homelessness, intensive services, ongoing housing support, really requires a substantial investment. This is not a cheap proposition. The city has been working really diligently to align resources from local partnerships, from the state, and from private partnerships. At our 20, at our February 21st workshop, the city committed to supporting these efforts and to working with Sutter Health to help bring in some money from private philanthropic resources, as well as committing general funds from our city. And in addition to the money that we talked about at the local level, we are very excited for the possibility of helping our, our constituents access federal funds via Medi-Cal through what's called the Whole Person Care Waiver Program. This sort of came up to our attention last minute, and we did submit an application to the state last week. It's still very much in review. But if it is successful, it will allow us the possibility of accessing Medi-Cal dollars to pay for many of these services, including the outreach, the housing support, the case management, and potentially bring up to $10 million of federal match for these services and allow us to free up our local dollars. So, I, I don't want to spend too much time on the Whole Person Care. We're really excited about it, we're really hopeful. It's a pretty big stretch for the city, but we're willing to take that on. And I'm happy to answer any questions from where we're at or to, to see if there's anything else as, as the conversation continues.
Okay, so we can understand your, nice picture here. What's common front door?
So, that's just sort of my analogy. So, currently, if somebody's experiencing homelessness in the County of Sacramento, you're going to go to wherever you can find resources. You might go knock on the door of a shelter, you might call up 211, you might call up your elected officials, I'm sure it happens to you quite a bit. And you get different resources depending both on your tenacity and also the, the knowledge of that person who's helping you. What we are looking for is a common place where everybody is pointed to the same place, gets the same resources, same assessment. This could be virtual, something like a 211 type of application. It could be co-located in community centers. But the idea is that there's one entry place, either virtual or physical, where people in need can access resources and get aligned the right resources. And that only those who are literally homeless or about to be literally homeless ever enter the homeless system of care.
Okay, so, does this say warm referral?
It does say warm referral. The idea here is right now, I know you guys are familiar with the Navigator Program, and it's been great, and we love our navigators and, and our council does. The problem is right now, it's sort of happenstance. Again, the person who is really outspoken or really able to champion for themselves is able to, to access these resources. The idea here is there'd be somebody making that connection for you so you're not left to your own sort of ability to, to champion for yourself.
Okay, so, moving to the right, in the gray box, V.I.S.P.D.A.T.
Don't ask me what it stands for, but it's our, we love to call it VI Spadat. So, essentially, this is an assessment tool that assesses the person's vulnerability. We do it already, and we have a list of 3,000 or 4,000 people we've assessed over the last two years. It does stand for something, Vulnerability Index, Service Prioritization, something. But it's an assessment of your vulnerability.
What's the Community Q?
Sure, the Community Q is, it's essentially a list of people experiencing homelessness who need housing in an order of vulnerability and priority.
Can I jump in on one thing only because going to cap to cap for the last couple of years, I don't know what VI Spadat means either, but that is the database and software that the navigators and everybody use to keep track of who they've been contacting.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, um, what's the COC Housing Program?
Sure, and I do apologize for all the acronyms. I should have provided a thesaurus. So, those are, the COC stands for Continuum of Care, which Sacramento Steps Forward administers.
Okay, so, um, uh, public housing allocation, RRH?
RRH stands for Rapid Rehousing, which is a housing intervention. You're familiar with this sounds like?
PASH?
Permanent Supportive Housing.
Okay, RRH?
Again, the Rapid Rehousing.
Oh, sorry, got it. And TH?
Transitional Housing, like Mather Community Campus.
Okay.
Again, I apologize, trying to fit things in boxes.
That's all right. And, um, but again, the voucher is simply something that you can use if there is a landlord willing to rent to somebody. Because you, both of you have said that it's totally market-based. So, if there's not, and believe me, we, we had to find, last year, we had to find housing for our niece. So, if there's not a, a property owner out there willing to rent to somebody, then your house, your voucher's virtually worthless.
Yeah, and this is why it's really critical. This box here is intended to recognize that and to create incentives for landlords, not just financial, but also supportive services. We recognize that we're going to be competing against the general open market. And so, we're hopeful that a program with, with intensive services can also come with some financial incentives. But yes, I mean, Sarah is 100% correct. This is relying on market availability of rental housing stock, which we all know is quickly diminishing.
Okay, other questions? Bob?
Yeah, um, how much of the money that you have comes from HUD?
So, none of, well, so Sacramento County as a whole gets about 19 and a half million dollars from HUD for the Continuum of Care-funded programs. The funding that the city is contemplating augmenting to create the services and intensive outreach, none of it's from HUD. It would be all local, as well as hopefully some philanthropic dollars. And if we get the Medi-Cal waiver, that would be federal dollars, but not via HUD. It's, it's Medicaid.
Okay, the reason I'm asking that is the, um, nothing, no one's mentioned the Mather Community Campus. That's the transitional program. And it's my understanding that HUD is getting rid of the transitional. They're trying to get people off the street and in a home, and they're not testing anymore for drugs or anything like that. I know they're going to have $2.5 million cut from the Mather Community Campus, the end of September of this year. How successful do you think that will be when you don't have any testing anymore and you have people who are still on drugs and alcohol, and they get into some of the homes? Those don't last very long.
Well, on the Mather question, I think Paul Lake is here, and he can probably speak to the county's efforts about Mather in particular. But in general, Housing First, which Rapid Rehousing and Permanent Supportive Housing both embrace the Housing First principle, which, which does what you described. It does not require programs or sobriety as a condition, a tendency, have proven on a national basis to be incredibly effective, oftentimes more effective than program-centered. You do have to accept that some people will move into housing and may never reach sobriety or, or stable mental health, but they are inside and housed. There will be people falling out of housing, that is natural. But evidence shows that Housing First programs are quite successful in reducing homelessness. They may not be as successful in eliminating the other challenges people face, but they, they are extremely effective in, in ending homelessness.
Thank you.
David?
So, we've heard estimates in the press and elsewhere ranging from 2,000 homeless in the region to 4,500 homeless families. If you use a school definition, it's probably tens of thousands of homeless because they view any minor threat to sort of your security in a living environment as a homeless situation. How many do we think we're actually talking about?
Right, so, I wish I had brought, I think I actually maybe did. Because this was a, this is a question we, I talked about with my council a few weeks ago.
Probably the annual survey from last year, but not this year's result, right?
Yeah, so the, the new numbers are not out yet. But we do believe that at any, over the course of a year, we probably have about, this is really rough estimates. We have about 5,000 people who will be without permanent housing in some point in the year. And about 2,000 of those at some point in the year will be unsheltered. To your point about the school districts, the sort of precariously housed folks, you are right, their numbers tend to hover around 10,000 to 12,000 school-aged children, again, during the course of the year. We don't have the new point-in-time count numbers. We'll have them another month or two. I don't suspect these numbers will go down, just sort of from what I see around. But all of our work has been based on an expectation of about 2,000 unsheltered folks during the course of the year and about 5,000 homeless in shelters. I do, I do want to note that this was a, an important point to our council's discussion and one of the reasons they added to their resolution the ability to work with at-risk households, because the last thing we want to do is force somebody to go onto the streets or sleep in their car just to access housing. So, we added that condition very purposely.
So, I'm on the League of California Cities Board, and we've had a lot of policy discussions. It's actually one of the priorities for the League of California Cities for, for last year and this year, is dealing with homelessness issues as well as affordability issues. The challenges that we see frankly are so large, just taking the, the 2,000 number. If that's 2,000 individuals or 2,000 families, I'm not sure.
More, most folks who are unsheltered are individuals. You don't see a lot of families on the street.
So, we probably would have a need for like 2,000 units of housing in various types. And if you went the route that we have in Rancho Cordova a couple of times now, building, building affordable housing or, or for veterans, you're talking about a per-unit cost of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Just could be a quarter million, could be 170, maybe that low. But something, something that can range. So, we're talking in excess of half a billion, maybe a billion dollars somewhere to meet, meet this sort of a need. And that's not really achievable by our region. That would require something like twice the Measure B that failed last year, devoted solely to building housing. So, we have to find a resource somewhere outside of that route. And so often, in lobbying the legislature, what you hear is, why aren't you building more units for the homeless? Why aren't you building more units for homeless? It's not, it's not fixable with that formula. So, I'm very curious about the mayor's proposal, the city's proposal, City of Sacramento's proposal, because I see potential here to really impact numbers. And everything else to me is just playing around the edges. You know, it's great that, you know, I think we probably have contributed more in terms of homeless housing with, with Mather Veterans Village than any jurisdiction has in quite a few years. And that's outrageous, really, that's kind of outrageous. So, I want to thank you for your proposal and for being here. And I look forward to seeing our discussion later.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I had a couple of questions about the city's proposal. And I apologize if you did clarify, but, um, understanding that, that right now, to, to be on the list and be considered homeless, it's self-reported. And, and just to clarify, the, the school district's numbers, for those of you who don't know, if you are living on, sleeping on your aunt's couch, you're considered homeless under the, under a lot of the definitions for education. But in, in this case, to get on the list and to be prioritized, you just say that you are, right? I mean, is there, there's, what kind of documentation? And I'm guessing, from what I've heard, there's none. Is that accurate?
Well, so this is why the city would prefer a limited preference. And I, and I certainly would ask LaShel and Sarah to correct me. So, if you go to the general preference waitlist, every person, all those 70,000 people could self-certify homelessness. And you're right, most people would because it's in their self-interest and their poor and, and challenge. If, however you do a limited preference, where the, the access to the units can be controlled by a partnership with a, a community organization doing the services, the, the justification of, of your homeless status is taken out from the, the individual and funneled through a program that's doing the outreach and engagement. And so, therefore, we, I think that that would be a much more responsible way so that you don't end up setting 70,000 people up to, to try to self-certify as homeless. So, the city's preference definitely is a limited preference waitlist, which I know is confusing.
And so, and then under this limited version, families of children and other, and other folks would still have some access to.
Right.
So, what's the, and I know I saw the, the chart that, that SHRA presented. Do we have, is there a specific breakdown as far as numbers? Is it two, is the city proposing 200 of these be for homeless and the rest be? Because I know, I heard 200 a couple of months ago, in January. What's the number that you're shooting for that you're trying to have this done with?
What the city asked on January 31st was that all of the turnover, or I shouldn't say all, 200 turnover units in public housing unit for two years and 600 turnover units in housing choice vouchers for two years. So, you had to 800 times two is 1,600.
But just so I'm clarifying, that's 1,600. She said that there's 1,600 in two years, so that's all of them.
That is, yeah, I mean, my understanding is the turnover is about 800 a year. That's how we came up with 800.
So, how many are being set aside for homeless?
That would be, so SHRA is working on that proposal. Now, that, what the city recommended was all of it. But I haven't seen, the SHRA is working on their proposal that'll be going to the board on the 21st of March.
I guess my question then, under that proposal, is, isn't that a general preference? For that, for that, that's not a limited. That's everyone that come, all of. That's everyone that come, all of these new ones that come in that are going to enter the system, say that they're homeless, they go ahead of everyone else? Am I not reading that right?
Well, and this is probably a question for LaShelle or Sarah, but I believe it can be accomplished because it's a limited timeframe. And the numbers I have seen from SHRA is that in actuality, it's not 600. It's maybe 650, 660. So we kind of rounded. But that's a good question for Sarah and LaShelle.
LaShelle, I don't know if you want to weigh in here. I'm just trying to track the numbers, because I hear that the city's got a preference of limited. But to me, that sounds like for those ones, that's a general preference.
Right. If you go with a limited preference, the way HUD views a limited preference is that you set aside a portion of, that's why they call it limited. They really don't look at it from the perspective of, your limited is all that you have available.
All 12,000.
All 12,000. So, most housing authorities, when they have a limited preference, they set aside a subset. That's why it's called limited. That's what we see. However, the city is correct, that you could use the limited as a way to use all. That's just not the way that most housing authorities do a limited set-aside preference.
So, in theory, if it was limited, but you said, "We're just reallocating all 1,200", you'd bump people off of the list and out of housing. This is just saying, "We're limiting it to the ones, the carryover ones are the ones that you recapture in a given year."
Correct.
But essentially, those are the only ones that anyone gets now, right?
They would be the only people served.
Right.
Yes.
The only new people served.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Which would then put people ahead of veterans on a list, or elderly on a list, or families on a list. I mean, genuine families, not individuals' classed as families. That kind of thing.
You can have homeless families.
Correct. Unless they were homeless. If they are not homeless, then yes, you are correct. If you are a family, or disabled, or a veteran, you would not be served over the two years.
Okay. So then, and looking back at my notes about the limited preference, it's vouchers, but it's still no services.
The limited preference does have services. That's the whole point, is that you're working with a third-party social service-type agency or system that is really working with that family intensely.
Because some of these vouchers could be Seventh and H, which is heavily intensive supportive service. It just depends on where they're available.
Okay.
Right?
I misunderstood.
And how they're used.
Thank you. Thank you to the city as well, thank you. Paul? Blake from the county, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Paul Lake, Deputy County Executive for the County of Sacramento. Thanks for inviting me here to talk a little bit about what the county has been doing in the past year or so to revamp and improve the services, the service system for the homeless. About a year ago, the Board of Supervisors decided we needed to create a new position within the county to coordinate all of our strategic efforts around homelessness. So we created a position called the Director of Homeless Initiatives, patterned after similar positions in LA County, and Alameda, and San Francisco. And that person, Cindy Kavanaugh, has been focused exclusively to look at all of our policies and all of the services that are provided and funded, both by the County of Sacramento and through our continuum of care operated by Sacramento Steps Forward. In September, during our budget hearings, we made a brief presentation to the board to lay out some of the key strategic issues to reduce homelessness. We acknowledged that our current system is not working. And I think there was a consensus on the part of the Board of Supervisors that indeed that is the case. So we need to take a whole new, fresh look at the system, and what we need to change, how we need to modify our investments, and start making the system work in a more effective way to help more people. We've since held three subsequent workshops. We held a workshop focusing on successful models and promising strategies that are out there that we want to consider implementing in the county. We had a workshop on ways to increase housing capacity, and looked at a number of models, some of which have been discussed tonight, including the look at SHRA's resources. And in January, we presented an update on our thinking around what changes we will be recommending. And we're going to be coming to the Board of Supervisors on March 21st with a full package, a full comprehensive package, of what we think needs to be in place in order to make these significant changes and have more success. Some of those elements have been touched on, but I do want to talk about those from the perspective of the county. Clearly, and I think everyone agrees, that for any of these efforts to work, we need some type of a very comprehensive and aggressive supportive rehousing program. That includes, as Ms. Halken mentioned, wraparound services. It includes case managers, people who can go out, and not just try to make contact and hand somebody a card that shows resources, and kind of leave it to them to pursue, but actual true caseworkers, social workers, who will go out and engage, and re-engage, and re-engage. I think we've all heard the stories that one encounter is not going to have a big impact on a lot of these folks. If it was that easy, they probably wouldn't be homeless in the first place. You need somebody to go back again, and again, and again, until they finally build some trust, and some rapport, and convince them to take advantage of the services that are out there. And it needs to be intensive, and it needs to be skilled. So we want to put together that supportive rehousing program, a program that's going to work with landlords, and go out and recruit landlords who are willing to provide the housing. A program that has supportive services, including financial services, first and last month's rent, security deposits, et cetera. Caseworkers who will work with that person who's in the housing when they're having problems, and that landlord wants to say, you know, "We can't have you live here anymore", somebody who will answer that phone at 2:30 in the morning from a landlord who's saying, "Hey, I'm having problems with this person you put here". And they're going to go out there and try to resolve that problem to try to keep that person in the housing. So we're talking about really intensive casework that needs to be in place. We're also taking a look at our emergency family shelter system. Right now, Sacramento County provides about $2.5 million in local dollars to support some of our emergency family shelters. A lot of that is funded by our CalWorks program. Back before 2010, most of it was provided by the General Fund. When the Great Recession hit, we had to find a new way to fund it so that they did not collapse. So we started using our CalWorks dollars. One of the problems with that is CalWorks is more narrow than the use of General Fund, because you have to be a CalWorks family. So it has created its challenges, but it has kept the emergency shelter system alive in those subsequent years. Now, there have been some significant changes in the last year on CalWorks, some of the CalWorks programs. One of them being the Housing Assistance Program through CalWorks, which allows people who are on that program 16 days of continuous shelter, or it provides them, when housing can be found, with first and last month's rent, security deposits. It also has a diversion component, so people who are on the precipice of becoming homeless, because perhaps they haven't paid their smud bill, or they're unable to meet their rent, that can provide them that assistance so they don't get evicted. In the past, that had been a once-in-a-lifetime benefit for CalWorks recipients. Last year, the legislature changed that, so it's now available to people once in a 12-month period. So we're seeing a significant increase in the number of people who want to take advantage of that. And we think it's going to have an impact on the number of people who actually need emergency shelters, because we have people out there who can hook them up with housing. We have a very successful housing support program through the CalWorks funding that does just that kind of outreach and connection with landlords to provide housing. And we've seen some success for it. The second, the next component is the transitional housing. As has been mentioned, HUD doesn't really like transitional housing. They want people in shelters for a very short period of time, and they want them to get into some type of permanent housing quickly. And not a lengthy program of staying in a transitional housing program, which they still consider those folks as homeless, because they don't have permanent housing. But these are folks that we recognize, there is a need. There is a niche in this system for transitional housing, such as that provided by Mather Community Campus. So we're taking a look at that, how we can incorporate those kind of programs into our continuum, how we can fund programs particularly that provide both housing and employment services, like Mather Community Campus does. As I said, HUD won't fund them. As Councilman Garvey pointed out, there's been a significant loss starting next fall for Mather Community Campus. And we've been working, we in the county have been working very closely with Volunteers of America to identify options for possibly modifying part of their program, to get some HUD funding, looking for some other options that HUD won't fund, but maybe there are some other federal programs. We have some promising possibilities that we're still working through. And when we go to the board on March 21st, we're going to, I think, be able to provide information that that gap has narrowed. We have some good options in play. But I suspect there will still be a need for some additional General Fund funding from the county and perhaps others. But it is our commitment to make sure that Mather does continue. Now, Mather has modified some of its criteria, some of its service requirements. In some respects, it has lowered the requirement to be sober upon entry. And it continues to provide services to people who do come in, who may still have a substance abuse problem. And they work very closely with them. And I know that some members of the board, including Supervisor Natoli, has some questions and concerns around that issue. And we are working with him and with Leo McFarland at VOA to address that, to make sure that the services can still be provided, to explore the commitments that have been made to your council and your community around that issue. So those are difficult questions, difficult issues that we are working through with them. The next component is a triage shelter, often called a triage center. This will be a 24/7 shelter that will provide all kinds of services, either onsite or through contract and connections. We're looking at targeting certain people to take advantage of that shelter initially, possibly exploring who are the highest users of service out there, kind of taking that 20/80 approach to the problem, where 80% of the resources might be taken up by 20% of the homeless that are out there. These are the people that are really affecting neighborhoods and business districts. These are the folks who are chronically homeless. They're making great demands on law enforcement, on our social service system. And we're looking at perhaps targeting them for a first cut at this triage shelter. There are going to be a lot of sighting issues. We haven't worked all those out yet. We'll be bringing to the boards some recommendations of how to approach that issue. It's important to keep in mind that anyone who enters the triage shelter has to be referred through our system. It's not going to be a walk-in shelter. It's not going to be a self-referral shelter. So we will control who goes in, and make sure that they're taking advantage of the services that will be available, so as to, one, have success in placing them in permanent housing, and two, to make sure they're not having an impact on the surrounding area. The other piece, obviously, is the vouchers, and I won't go over that again. Sarah, Thomas, and LaShelle have covered that certainly far better than I ever could. And then the last piece I want to talk about is the No Place Like Home program. This is a state program that was passed by the legislature last year, and will start taking effect in about a year. Effectively, we have Mental Health Services Act money that comes to the county to provide mental health services. We have millions of dollars' worth of services out there, many of them provided to the homeless. And we typically get growth money, based on the revenue source. Well, for this program, the state has decided that they're not going to give the county the growth money. They're going to instead create a bond program that the county's money, what was the county's money, pays for. And counties can try to get some of that back through a competitive process, which we intend to do, to build more housing or rehab existing housing targeted towards homeless mentally ill. The county has to commit to providing services to those units for 20 years. So that will be a challenge for us to figure out how to do. But we will be submitting a competitive proposal so that we can get those funds and use them for the purpose, which we, I think we all agree, that more housing is absolutely critical. So I don't want to sound too much like I'm critical. I just don't like it when people take our money. But nonetheless, that's the essence of what the county's doing. We're coming back on March 21st to present this package to the board, get some direction from them around what we should be including in our budget requests for June, and moving this package forward. So I'm open to any questions.
Any questions?
So do you have a recommendation? Have you developed a recommendation yet to the board on the vouchers?
No, that, actually, the county staff is not making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding the vouchers. The recommendation for that will be coming from SHRA staff.
David?
So actually, I thought we were here to seek clarity on that specific issue, to give direction, or to have our staff write a letter in support, or something of the general homeless option, or something like that, in terms of how the vouchers would be distributed.
Yeah, we'll get into the policy discussion. I just want to see if you had any questions for the speaker.
None of our three speakers have actually directly advocated one way or the other on those. It's just been general information.
Right. Correct.
All right.
Any other questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Thank you.
And so David, yeah, you're right. I believe that SHRA has actually been charged with presenting options and then getting feedback from each of the jurisdictions about what our thoughts are. So this would be the time to do that. Or ask any more clarifying questions.
Actually, I think I need a little bit more information than I have to start asking more questions.
I recognize this is time-sensitive. They're meeting on March 21st. They need some direction from us by then. As I stated in my previous comment, homelessness has been an issue here for an awfully long time. It seems like most of what the region has done has been to play around the edges. You know, I've attended several meetings, task force meetings, et cetera, on homelessness. There seems to be some competition, some lack of cooperation among the various types of advocacies that are out there, the various programs that exist out there, none of which, even if multiplied several-fold, are having a significant impact on the overall numbers, near as I can tell. There are jurisdictions elsewhere in the country that have tackled this successfully, and Housing First does seem to have a critical role there. So for me, I'm actually excited by this general homeless option, and the idea of making voucher or other spaces available on a priority basis to the homeless, because I don't see any other mechanism at hand, or even theoretically available, that would have a significant impact on the magnitude of this problem.
So, I actually probably have one last question for city staff, SacCity staff. David talked, we all have the opportunity, as you heard Cyrus say, to travel around the country and to see other programs in other places. And given the fact that this region doesn't seem to hesitate to take things to the ballot, I'm wondering why nobody has thought about going to the voters to ask for some sort of a ballot measure to fund the construction of additional affordable housing, the way they've done in Austin? I realize, you know, everybody's got different demographics. But when you consider that this problem is now county-wide, it's not like it's just around loaves and fishes, or just hanging out on the parkway or something. It's everywhere. And one would think that people's level of frustration is such that they might entertain a ballot measure.
Right. I think that's a great point, and it actually did come up in our council's discussion as well. And I think that you would probably find some support from your counterparts at the city. I think that that discussion isn't mutually exclusive to this one. I think that one of the reasons that the city of Sacramento is so interested in this proposal is because of the urgency of the issue. We certainly support new development, new funding streams. All of that has to happen as well. But those types of things take a lot of time and energy and preparation, and we're in a crisis situation. And so, yes, what I would say is, yes, that, and we have to have an immediate response. And that's why the city is so interested in pursuing this, because this is what is currently available. We certainly want to continue bigger discussions about resources and new construction, and would love to be a partner in any of those.
And I think that conversation's more of a political one than a policy one. But there has our... But there has already been some discussion with certain elected officials that had proposed a recrodation fee at the county to create a county housing trust fund. So that's, that's been on the table for a while, whether or not anybody's gathering signatures. That's not happening at the moment. I think my feedback, I, I probably would tend to lean towards the city proposal. I, my only concern is really looking, looking at the impact this would have to families and especially children. Being able to enter into these programs would be stifled for at least two years. And so this comes at a cost. And so the question becomes, are getting, getting homeless people housed, usually meaning individuals being housed, is a higher priority than female head of household with three children? And my answer would be no. So if there was a way to even have a, trying to remember the terms, they're not in front of me, but not a general, but a
Limited.
Limited with the, with the, the turnover vouchers, to me would make more sense. So if it's 1,600, then 1,000 of them are homeless and 600 are still for, for families in general. I'd, I'd prefer to see a weighted version of something like that. I guess that's just me personally. Because while I agree that we have a crisis when it comes to homelessness, and we have a growing problem, we also have a growing problem of homeless families just from sheer cost burdens in California. And you can look no further than what happened in Oakland with the GoShip property. You know, if we don't start to address these problems for families, we're going to end up with more people living in industrial areas and in their cars and a lot of other things. And you can also look at the story over the weekend, and for those of us that were at League of California Cities, we heard this number back in Long Beach in October, that we're exporting a lot more low-income people and we're importing a lot more wealthy people. And that's because there's not affordable housing for our lower-income people to continue to live here. So as much as homelessness is a crisis, housing in general in California and in this region is a crisis, and turning off the spigot and, and access for, for non-homeless families to enter into the public housing and the voucher program, I think is also a danger. So while, while I totally agree with the problem, you're also exacerbating another problem that, that probably affects more people. I think homelessness affects you if you have a homeless person in front of your business, on your neighborhood, on your, on your, you know, your hike down the American River Trail. But there's probably many more people living in their cars not causing anyone problems that are considered homeless too. And then you have other people that have been waiting on these lists for a decade, that now we're saying, okay, you would have been next, but now you're going to wait two years. So I'd rather see some sort of balance to it. But I also think that, you know, at some point, we do need to get more creative with how we use these vouchers and how we use these programs. So if this is going to be our experiment, I, I wouldn't necessarily oppose it. But I guess that's my two cents. I don't, I don't know if that gives city staff enough direction to, to write something, but at least that's my two.
I have one question to Don. He's been very supportive for all the years, like I've been. I've been on the oversight for Mather Community Campus since 1994. And Don Natoli has been probably one of the most advocate helps, helpers you can find for the people out there. Are you expecting a good program for Mather to, or is it going to change to a permanent housing on all those, all those apartments in there and it'll be completely gone?
Let's make sure, too, that we're focused on what this, this topic is, which is not that, to be honest with you. Don, come on. But I, I want to make sure, because I think we're also going to have some larger conversations with the county in the coming months about programs like that that aren't affected by this. But in the end, federal policy is the federal policy, and unless this new administration changes it, there's very little at the local level that we have control over the conversion of these things. But Don, if you wanted to have any comments?
Yeah. Thank you for the question, and certainly thank you for hearing this this evening. I think it's important, certainly for this council and the communities that you represent, but certainly for councils and others throughout the county to have a chance to know, hear about certainly the SHRA work, also certainly the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento. I think to Bob's specific question, there's no, there's no question in my mind that certainly Mather Community Campus and the good that it's done for hundreds and hundreds of people, families, both individuals and families, with nearly a 20-year track record, it's a model program, this community and certainly this council has been very supportive of the efforts out there. To the point that Paul made very briefly here, one of the concerns I have is the structure. Obviously, the funding structure that comes from other sources that has been underpinning for a good deal of the programmatic support for Volunteers of America and the other partners out there has gone in a bit of a different direction to the Housing First that Councilmember Sanders spoke to a moment ago. But I, I for one, and I think that's part of what Paul was reporting on, is that looking at more comprehensively, that if we're going to have a system to address housing deficiencies and homelessness and the fact that families and individuals are in various facets of distress and may need different levels of attention to help them, you know, regain their self-sufficiency, then in my view, and I, and I think this is shared by others on the Board of Supervisors, I certainly know it's shared because I've heard from others in the community, that what we need to, to have is this, and we talk about continuum, but, but there's different components. And certainly Mather and St. John's and Serna Village, some of those components that are, you know, have been either non-traditional as it relates to the now Housing First approach, or have been approaches that received federal funding and therefore got other funding support over the, over the past years, may not be right in alignment with it, because they may provide employment services, may have longer-term stays. The idea is that only when somebody exits that program, hopefully they've gotten their life back together, that they've dealt with their sobriety issues, they've dealt with their employment and any other issues that, that they faced, and that they go back out there and maybe not into non-subsidized public housing or, or housing. And so to your question, though, Bob, I would say that in my view, Mather is a key component for success that we build upon in this community and it needs to remain so in the future, and that working certainly with this community and, and you as council members, but with Volunteers of America and other partners out there, I think it has a key, a key place in the ongoing approach to dealing with homelessness and, and housing issues for folks in the community. And each of you is addressing your comments as relates to, I think, some of the challenges, is that there's not sufficient housing, and that there's certainly not the amount of money that you, you would want to have available to you. So with that constraint, how do we deal with issues of chronic homeless, with families that fall in and out of homelessness and, and other issues? And I would just say that, that this may be helpful to you this evening, last comment I'll make, is that we will have a staff report out in a few days. I think it's prior to your next meeting on March 20th, certainly in advance of our meeting on March 21st. That may be informative to you. SHRA will have done its work. They're going to be going to their commission. I trust LaShelle will share that with you next week. You know, the city may have other work that they've done, but, but our report to our Board will be available, and that might be helpful to you before your frame of resolution, because that may at least give you some of the numbers. And to discussions you've had here amongst yourselves about balance, about programmatic elements and, and themes, I could offer that. I think that may give you a little bit of time to, to, you know, deliberate a little more and certainly come to your conclusion as to what you would best, in the interest of the people you represent, but certainly our community as a whole, consider, and then obviously offer that comment to our Board for his consideration.
That'll be helpful, I think, getting that information to us. And I thank you for coming here tonight.
Oh, you bet. Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Don, but I guess I'm about to.
Sure, that's all right.
Can you give us a timeline for, for how these pieces fit together? I mean, the, the deficit we all have is that we have no authority implied in the state constitution or, or elsewhere for doing social services. And so as a group, we have essentially no experience at this. This is all Greek. We're not part of SHRA. It's, it's a county responsibility by and large, and so we just don't, we don't know much about it. But we're being asked to weigh in, because our residents are overwhelmingly concerned about this homelessness issue. We did a poll of our residents last fall, and if you look at it, sort of the top five issues there, three or four of them are homelessness. Number one is absolutely homelessness. That's kind of shocking for any community. But so it's had a huge impact here in Ranch Grado. We feel like we've got to do something about it. But do you think by, at, at your next meeting, you're sort of going to be voting on, on this idea of, you know, do we reprioritize these vouchers? Is that, is that an action item that's imminent?
We will have action items, and if it doesn't happen on 21st, it will be fairly imminent, yes. And, and some of it relates to budgetary considerations for our June budget considerations. When Paul referenced, a triage, a center, certainly the emergency shelter grants in support for the Mather's and the Serna Villages and, and the St. John's providers, this issue of the vouchers and the availability for populations generally or targeted, all that will be for us. And so again, that'll be the presentation. Again, it's a lead, a lead-up that's been about a year in, in, in progress now. And it will be an action item that will have, you know, budgetary issues, you know, along with it, including supportive services. Because if we choose, depending what options we, we, you know, we choose, you know, in part of our deliberations, they will require commitments that could go as, as much as 20 years or something in between. And again, I think as, as Paul referenced, that with the, you know, recession and some of the things, choices we made that were pretty awful choices, nonetheless, they reflect obviously kind of the current programmatic format. And no question about it, though, to, to your, your point that, you know, the city certainly found in its survey, we understand not only the visibility of homelessness, but the impacts on neighborhoods and on the parkway and on daily life and your, you know, your conduct of your business and so forth. And whether you're in the downtown or you're in Ranch Grado, or you're in Citrus Heights, or you're down in Elk Grove, or even in the rural areas of the county, it, it is having an impact and one that, again, clearly is not going to be, you know, solved in, you know, immediately. But I think looking at what we're doing, how we're spending the millions of dollars that the county certainly has the authority to, you know, invest it in with us, how we shape that, and with some of the funding sources that are available to us, some that have got redirected and others that may be available in the future. So it will, it will be, to your point of imminency, this will be, over the course of the next couple of months, I think, no longer by June, you're going to have some policy directives and some budget directives by the Board of Supervisors on this.
Okay, good.
So to summarize, there's, there's going to be a decision on this proposal, but then it sounds like the county's also going to start to wrap its arms around a much larger initiative
Right.
by, by, by June time for your budget.
It'll be related in subsequent actions to this, yes.
So we should be watching for the next few months?
Yeah, and, and weighing in, yeah. Not just watching. Because again, I, I think to point about it, this is a community-wide issue, and Linda said that a moment ago, you all acknowledge it. And so we certainly welcome any level of support and commentary. And I would just like to say, too, certainly your work, point David made, but others referenced it, with, you know, Mather Veterans Village, you look at the housing that was created there, and I think, you know, the ongoing efforts with your Phase Two and Three, I think are strong indicators certainly of this community's work to, you know, address homelessness amongst our general population, but certainly those that have served our country. And you're to be, you know, commended for that. And I think other initiatives you've taken relative to, to housing, because you may not have that piece that you said, David, that you control, but you've certainly been a partner in that. And I think the way you've supported and embraced the Community Campus program as well has been very indicative of a community that's very, very caring, but also very concerned.
Thank you. Good.
Thank you, Don.
And only since I didn't hear you say it, for the record, that was County Supervisor Don Natoli.
Yeah. So I, I would just kind of wrap up with my comments, because we've all talked about, we've all talked about the countering impact of what's going on. Unfortunately, it was a crisis, it may be a crisis today, but it was a crisis two years ago, and it's certainly not going to go away. From my perspective, I, I understand David's point about, this seems like it could make progress. The fatal flaw is bumping these people who have been on wait lists for a long time. That's not, I don't find that appropriate, and I find it somewhat rude.
But you don't necessarily bump them to homelessness. You're, you're, they're surviving now without homelessness. You're asking them to continue to survive without homelessness.
Not all of them on the wait list are surviving without homelessness. That's not, not the impression I got. That, like, and Donald, they may be couch surfing on their ranch couch. But, but seriously, whether we're talking about the elderly or children or, or our veterans, you know, having grown up, having grown up in the Air Force and appreciating the fact that everybody who goes into the military, in essence, gives their lives to the federal government. And we all traveled around the world, you know, in some good places and some very unpleasant places because of that. And, and, and it was really, it was like, it was like a two-party contract, except that when we started closing bases and closing military installations back in the late 80s and early 90s, then the federal government, from my perspective, started breaking that contract. And, and if we, if we participate in something that, that prevents veterans from being housed, just as one particular class that's waiting for housing, then my perspective is it's just another furtherance of breaking that contract even worse. And I personally don't think that's very polite. So I, I, I get your point, David, but that, to me, this strikes me as the low-hanging fruit. And there's, you know, we're only, Donald knows a great deal about this. Some of us are, have learned more in the last week than, than in the last 14 years. And, and we probably should have learned more about it a long time ago, but this does not seem like the right solution.
Well, and I would just kind of point out, as, as I heard that they're living now, you know, the thing to remember, too, is that if you're low-income, you're, you're one and a half times more likely to die before 85. So if you're low-income, you're not going to live as long. And getting access to these programs actually extends your life, and it's proven to do that. So we should keep that in mind. And again, I, David, I don't disagree with anything that you said, except the, what, what the approach should be in the end. I, it is a crisis, but it is also, we also have an affordability crisis. And, you know, we're splitting up families and people are moving out of state because they can't be here. So I'm not opposed to this program. I think I'm opposed to all of them for two years going to just that. But I think setting aside a higher number of them and prioritizing it and seeing how that works. And if you want to come back to me in six months or a year and give me some sort of amazing result that, you know, crime's gone down and people aren't complaining, and we have less panhandling and all these other things, then maybe we can try that. But to go from the rules that have been in place for decades, as far as I understand, to, to this, I think, I think is a bit much. But I definitely would want to try it in some way. But I don't think turning off the access to everyone else except this subgroup of people is fair and hasn't necessarily been proven yet. So I'd like to see if there was, if there's some sort of meeting in the middle with this 1,600. And I don't know if that's 1,200. I don't know if that's 1,000. We have a very capable supervisor that I think can make that decision, and I trust him to do that. But that would be at least my preference in looking at this. And, you know, as much as I may sound like I can, you know, know some of this, I work in, for, you know, for sale affordable housing. This is not my specialty in, in any way. And full disclosure, I work with SHRA on a daily basis on other programs related to homeownership. So this is, I'm just on the periphery of this. So we, we are all newbies to a lot of these conversations. I probably learned, learned more on the, the last two cap-to-cap trips sitting next to her about this, about this issue than I had in 10 years in working in affordable housing and doing what I was doing. So.
One more thing. And Reed, you know this much better than most of us do anyway, because you've been working on housing and everything from the veterans to all the other things. Is there anything that you can think of, or are we giving you what you're looking for on this direction?
I, I think staff is pretty close to having the information it needs to come up with appropriate kind of summary of the council's position. I did, though, want to confirm two things. That I heard that regardless of the strategy selected, we wish, the council wishes to see wraparound services to the maximum extent possible. And then I have a little prejudice for the project basing in a time when we're seeing our vacancy rates hovering between 3% and 5% on the rental side and no boom in the, in the near future. Project basing really assists in the rehabilitation or construction of new units. And I would, that's the one thing that I didn't really hear kind of any consensus on, that some portion of this 1,600 rollover thing that I didn't really hear any consensus on, that some portion of this 1,600 rollover vouchers and public housing units be allocated to project basing. Again, I'm sure the supervisor and the board of supervisors can make the right decision, but don't ignore that.
You know, and Reed, that's a really interesting observation. And then, maybe that's the answer. Dedicate all of the project-based ones to this approach and see how that works. Maybe that's the approach, and then leave the housing choice vouchers to the general list. And again, I'm just spitballing here, because, again, this is the question before us. What, personally, what I'm much more interested is the next few months of what is the county actually going to do and step up? And there's been conversations about what we're going to do with Mather Community Campus, and Serna Village, and Quain Cottage, and a bunch of other ones out there that are still doing transitional, and we all love it. But essentially, that's got to come out of the County General Fund if it's going to continue to operate in the manner that it has been. And that's, what, $10 million in program income between a handful of those organizations? So, as we continue to move in, I think this is a small, and to Linda's point, this is a small discussion and myopic look at some low-hanging fruit of what we do with these 1,600 vouchers and how that affects 1,600 people. But this could, and to David's point, this could only be described as a pilot program, considering the magnitude and issues that we have surrounding the number of people that we need to deal with. And so, as the county continues to talk about it, I hope that they will continue to engage us, and we will continue to be engaged.
I would suggest we actually defer giving staff final approval for a letter until we see that staff report. If we have another meeting between now and then, we should probably take advantage of that, because otherwise, we're expressing an opinion about something we haven't even really seen framed.
Well, that's a timing crunch.
Yeah, we actually do. So, our next council meeting is on March 20th. The county board hearing is on March 21st. So, we have the opportunity to bring you some of the options based on the information that we received from SHRA. And then, on the basis of that information, we could have some further discussions on March 20th, and give us the final direction to present that to the county board of supervisors.
That's what I would be most comfortable with, having, as Bob said earlier, the best information. We can actually see what the county is framing for discussion, and then craft a letter appropriate.
You know, the one thing that we didn't ask, well, Sheldon, I'm sorry, the presenter's name is Sarah, about is what you've heard so far, and are we your first visit? Have you been to Elk Grove, or Citrus Heights, or anybody else? I mean, where are you starting to, and can you report that yet?
Well, we have had an opportunity to talk to all the cities. So, today concluded our last meeting. So, we've met with Folsom, Iltin, Galt, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, and yourself. So, we've had an opportunity to do that, and different cities are approaching it differently. Some are just providing us with kind of their perspective in writing. Others, like yourself, are inviting us to come and do a presentation and to answer questions, and then preparing something more formal based on that. So, it really has varied, depending on the jurisdiction. But I would say the common denominator, and talking to all of the different jurisdictions, is that they all have the same problem, just to varying degrees. So, it's not that it's isolated in any one area, per se. So, they all see it from their own perspective and are very interested in terms of how we move forward.
Thank you. Well, thank you all. That was a very good discussion.
And not to slight anybody, but we want to thank Supervisor Toly again for coming up at this time of night.
And with that, we're going to move on to 16.2, which is the Regional Sanitation Five-Year Rate Plan and Eco Water Project Update. And we just have to say that I know, we know that Councilmember Skoglan is sorely missed at this meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and the council. Yes, we're missing him, too. He's the one who asked for the presentation, and unfortunately, he had to miss it. I spoke with him on Friday, and he's in good spirits, and we wish him speedy recovery. 2017 has to bring him a new life. I mean, he's been through many surgeries, and we're hoping that he will come through well. Just before I start my presentation, I wanted just to report to you this very important topic you just discussed. Regional Sand does provide 200 units, essentially, impact fees. We waive them a year. Some people know it, and I think probably some people don't, I just wanted to mention that. Also, that waiver extends to Sacramento area sewer district as well. So, we're doing our part in terms of helping with this issue. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about the, why we're needing the rating adjustments, and also to give you an update on the Eco Water Project, which you may have heard in name, and perhaps you'll see some pictures, you'll see some pictures today. I'll quickly go over what the local service and regional service is, and the rate drivers, and some of the prior project, give you the project update on the Eco Water Project, and a five-year rate plan, and the protest process in the public hearing. Just to give you a quick background, Regional Sand was formed in early 70s to combine all the wastewater treatment systems that were serving in the region at the time. We had a total of 22 different treatment plants, discharging into American River, Sacramento River, and then to the land in this area. And ultimately, we built one treatment plant, and this is down in Elk Grove. And this plant started operation in 1982. All of the wastewater, all the way from just kind of the service area, east all the way from Folsom, north from the airport, west to West Sacramento, and from south to Cortland and Walla Grove, it all comes to Regional Sand, the treatment plant in Elk Grove. Serve a little over 1.4 million people in the region. And it's located, like I said, the treatment plant is located down in Elk Grove in the midst of a 3,200-acre site. It operates 24/7, and once the wastewater is treated, it discharges the water back into the Sacramento River. Just a little bit about the difference between the Regional Sand and the local collection system. Regional Sand does the conveyance, the large pipes, and the treatment process, and the discharge part of it. But there are local collection agencies that collect the sewage. In case of Rancho Cordova, that would be the Sacramento sewer district. I serve in the same role for the district, and Sacramento sewer district collects sewage from about 1.2 million of the 1.4 million people. Rest of the three collection agencies collect sewage from the remainder of the 200,000 or so. A little bit on the background in terms of why we need the upgrade to the treatment plant. We had a permit that was issued back in 2010, right here in Rancho Cordova, at the Water Resources Control Board meeting back in 2010. What's different was that that permit added a couple of different additional treatment requirements. One is that we have to remove ammonia, that's part of human waste, before it gets discharged into the Sacramento River, because out of the concern that ammonia may be causing a decline of the Delta ecosystem. Now, we believe that the science is quite settled, not quite settled in that regard, but we agree to, because the board has essentially asked us to do it sort of in abundance of caution. And also, the board requires us to filter our water before it goes in. So, we will have, once the project is complete, about 97% of the water gets filtered. So, we named the project, the Eco Water Project. We had a lot of different names. We even started with the concept of naming it Big Flush, but didn't quite sit well. So, we decided we're going to do it, the Eco Water Project, named after the big building of the airport. What you're looking at is an aerial view of this site, only part of the site where a lot of work is happening, where you see Flow Equalization Storage Project, Biological Nutrient Removal, and all of those names, these are individual projects. Largest infrastructure project in the region. It was the largest project when the plant was originally built, and it is the largest project when the plant is being upgraded. So, it's replacing the heart of the treatment plant. The current heart today does not have the ability to remove ammonia. So, we have to replace that heart with a newer heart. Let me see if I can put that back here. If you want to look at the screen on the top back there, which I don't have the ability to put the pointer onto your screens. But if I'm just simply showing a little circle there, that's the current heart right there. Now, that we're replacing with this heart. Just to give you a reference, that new heart is the size of 16 football fields, all of which is going to be under concrete, in concrete, tanks, pumps, aerators, and all kinds of cool equipment that's going to be in place. That picture is about maybe five months old. There's a lot, the walls, the slabs starting to be poured. Also, on the north of that picture is where we have this whole big storage project, which we're going to be putting concrete down. When this project is done, we will have used close to 35,000 cubic yards, or not 35,000, I'm talking, it's more, 400,000 cubic yards of concrete. 35,000 is kind of an order of magnitude smaller than what we were thinking. We've already excavated about a million and a half yards of dirt from there, which you can imagine what the enormity of the project is. It'll add a new heart, and then it'll also add filtration, which is a final step, and we will improve the disinfection as well before it goes into the river. The project is estimated to be between 1.5 to 2.1 billion dollars. The current estimate is running about 1.8 billion. Back when we had the permit in 2010, we were estimating a real-time dollars of 2.7 billion. We'd done a number of things to reduce the project. It's broken into 17 discrete projects for a number of reasons, not the least of which is to create work for, you know, provide work for the local firms. Very few would be in a position to build as big a project in one unit. Mining capacities are an issue as well for the construction. Two of the 17 projects are in a 400 to 500 million dollar range. The rest of them are the smaller ones. Peak month spending is roughly about 27 million a month, and we're estimating about 350 people working on site. This last summer, I think we've reached close to 300 of them, and we still have one of the largest projects yet to be brought into construction phase of it. We have two completion dates. The first half, the ammonia removal or the nutrient removal has to be in place by May 2021, and the filtration needs to be complete by 2023. So, we've done a number of things, as I was mentioning, about the cost savings. The one is that we have put in a pilot project to study the treatment technologies. It really helped us in picking the technology that is suitable to us. Now, often, we get a question, wastewater treatment has been in existence for a long time, why do you need to do pilot, especially spending almost $15 million or $18 million? That is, wastewater is unique in each community because of the distance it has to travel, and it undergoes changes along the way. And it is also important that we pilot test and pick the technology before we spend $2 billion. And I'm sure you wouldn't be happy if we said, oops, we missed the technology after having spent the $2 billion. The pilot process helped us save hundreds of millions of dollars. And also, we received the largest low-interest loan in the nation through the State Revolving Fund. When the original project was built in '82, 87% to 90% of the project was based on the grant funding. And there are no more grants. And the closest we can get is the low-interest loan. The last of the loan packages that I signed a couple of weeks ago, the interest is 1.7%. If we have to go into the public market, we're in the 4.5% range. So, the interest loan savings from this loan is over half a billion, more closer to a billion dollars. We don't need to raise customers' rates by close to $7 a month just because of the low-interest loan, which is otherwise we would have had to raise. We've done a number of other things to bring the project costs down. So, the project, I'm happy to report, is under budget and on schedule. And we also keep our customers informed through a number of means. Every fall, we have been sending for the last four years or so a public newsletter that you see in mail, in terms of describing what the project status is and where we're heading, some of the milestones. And also, this year, I think one of the pictures, probably. So, this year, we've, through Prop 218 notice, also, we've informed customers in terms of the progress as well. So, when we were looking at in 2010, our projections were to be in the mid 60s, low 60s by the end of the decade. When we did the pilot project, we lowered it down to 50s. And because of the loan, we reduced those. And further, we're now projecting the rates to be by 39 by the end of the decade, actually more close to in 2022. We do annual financial plan. If our financial planning is correct, we see a freezing of the rate increases beyond 2022. We need these rate increases to be able to pay the debt service for the new loan that we have incurred as part of the project, as well as the additional operating and maintenance costs that need to be brought in to run the treatment plant, the new components of the treatment plant. So, we're proposing the rate increases, a dollar for the next three years, each year, a dollar each year for the next three years, and 50 cents for the following two. Now, our board will be asked to, again, like I was saying, that we sent the public notice in terms of Prop 218 notice last fall with the, I think, customers receiving in January. I don't know what happened, but I guess I can continue. Maybe it's telling me it's time's up. Now, we have held a number of meetings at the council, this is the last one. And also, we've held a number of public meetings where, outside the council meetings. We also have provided on our website and various ways to reach out to the folks. One important thing I want to mention here is that we do have a low-income assistance program. Most of the affordable housing residents, if not all of them, actually qualify for these things. We provide $150 rebate for our rates a year. So, that's what we have available. And if anybody, again, the threshold for that is 200 times the federal poverty level. If anybody below that for a family of four, it's, I think, around $40,000 or so. So, our hearing is on March 8th, that would be this Wednesday coming up. And once our board considers and approves our increase, it'll go into effect on July 1st, 2017. And we'll continue on for the following four years. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, comments.
Any questions? David?
Sure, I've got a couple, and unfortunately, they're not quite on this topic.
Okay.
I'm somewhat familiar with this, been following it. I want to congratulate you on dealing with a very big, what I thought at the time was a mess, I still kind of think of it as a...
You were there.
As a mandated mess, yeah. I gave testimony.
Yes, you have.
Not sure it made much of an impact in that hearing.
Well, it did, in a way. Just to point on that, we did sue the regional board and the state board. We were able to settle, and we reduced the cost of it by $150 million. Instead of having 100% filtration, we felt that mostly, especially this time of the year, we can shave some of it when nobody's recreating on the river. That is about $150 million saving.
Wow.
So, it is helpful. Everybody helps.
That's good. At the time, you were being asked to prove a negative, which is not easy in terms of coming to a resolution on that issue. So, as a scientist, I was kind of offended by that. But anyway, I've got a question about Regional Sand. I've had it for some time, and costs that are associated with other public agencies. So, for example, we've often heard, if we want to add a water fountain to a park, that cost us, just the Regional Sand connection fee is $50,000. And so, because it's a new service connected to that park. And so, generally, we don't have any kind of facilities in our parks because the connection fee is a big barrier, even for something like a water fountain. Is there any way, as you're updating all of your fees going forward, to look at how much you're charging sort of public agencies to put in public facilities?
Not as part of this effort, but I was working with Cyrus on that very issue. If it's a water fountain, actually, you don't even need to connect to the sewer. You do a little French drain, and that's done. So, you don't even need to spend, I mean, if that little one was the case, I think if we had connected to the regional, probably would have cost maybe around $4,000 or $5,000. The more, the bigger issue is the local sewer is where, because you have an acreage and whatnot. So, we are looking at ways to deal with the big areas, but small use kind of thing, but on the local sewer side. In this particular case, you don't even need to make the connection. It's... It's, it's actually just...
Pointing case, a case in point, we, the fountain at Cavallo Ranch, we did try this. The building, and we had conversation at the time, it's, the building code requires some connection, but we were able to come up with some modifications to the design that allowed that to happen.
Called it a fountain, instead of a drinking fountain?
It, I think it still qualifies, as long as you have proper drainage, it could, it could work out.
So I'm wondering if there are other cases like this? I mean, so the next step after a drinking fountain in a park would be restrooms?
Restroom definitely needs a connection.
Hugely demanded, but the, the connection fee, again, is a substantial portion of the, of the total cost.
Regional sands wouldn't be that substantial, because it's based on the use, the number of people that are using it. It's more the local collection is where it's based on the acreage. I think we're looking at a ways to carve out a small area where the, you know, the facility is there, and see if we can assist a fee based on that. We're looking to do it more on the local collection basis, a little bit of flexibility. That's not what I'm here to present today, but it's...
Right.
...on site.
Okay. So I have one other off-topic question.
Go ahead.
Infill is obviously a priority for the region, but also a big challenge, and the fees associated with updating old sewer systems in an infill situation can greatly deter the ability of infill to ever pencil out. Is it legal or possible for the district to subsidize infill development?
Subsidy is not the word that I use, that I would use.
That's fine.
For this reason, because Government Core 661313 requires us to collect the, for the service that we provide in terms of the fees. Prop. 18 deals with the rates, but the Government Core 661313 deals with the fees. We have actually two-tier fee structure. The infill is what's considered the boundary that existed in the 70s at the time for the regional sand, or the early 80s, because the infrastructure that was built in at the time was built in with the grant money. So the, the improvements that had been made since then, or smaller improvements, which is reflecting in the, in the fee that we charge, for example, today, if you were to build a house in infill area, what's called an infill area, it's about $3,300 or $3,400, I didn't check the exact number, but if you were to do in the new area, for example, much of the Douglas area, you know, the, around Rancho Cordova, you're looking at about $5,500. So there's a difference. So for people to go in and spend a little less in infill area that already exists. In terms of the, the fees in the new areas, used to be around $7,500 back in 2010, 2011. We did the impact, essentially fees, looked at it and redesigned them, and we dropped them down to as low as 4,200 or 4,500. They're gradually going back up with, because of the large project that we're building. So there's a two-tier system that exists today. If there, I don't know if there's any part, off the top of my head, I don't know if there's any part of Rancho Cordova in, in the infill area, if it were to be, probably more in the northern part of it. So a time when a community that, that has to get into the, to the, go from, they can transition from the new to infill, once a 70% of that area is developed, is, then it's considered to be an infill, and they'd be qualified for the lower.
I see. Yeah, we have, we've had situations here in the past, Kurt Haven's actually sitting here, where a restaurant was interested in going on, you know, on Folsom Boulevard. That's of interest to everybody. You want Folsom Boulevard to be healthy economically, and the barrier was, it was a grease trap in place from our previous restaurant, and probably from the 60s. The code has changed, and now you need the larger one, you need a new connection, because the pipes were not large enough, you need the new connection fee. It added up to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of expense for a restaurant that probably you could have just resumed the use and you'd be fine. But that added expense made it impossible, they could not go to infill, and the level of expenses is high enough that you could never consider really a restaurant there for infill. The greenfield would always outcompete it, always be cheaper. And so that is a huge barrier to infill development, particularly commercial development. And that's what I'm trying to find, there has to be, you know, as a region, we really have to embrace this idea that infill's important, and we have to systematically look around and find all those barriers that exist to it and knock them down, and if it requires subsidy by new growth areas or adjacent residential areas for those infill corridors, I think we've got to do that, or they're, or they're basically doomed. They're, they're locked into a system that will not be economic.
Yeah, I don't know this exact case, so I can't really comment on that particular case, but I will tell you that the current fee structure for both the Sacramento Sewer District, which collects sewage from homes and delivers it to regional sand, and the regional sand, both have lower fees for the infill areas. Now, it may be that you're redoing the restaurant and you're changing it in a way that requires upsizing in the pipe, and I don't know, again, I'm unaware of the details of this particular case. But generally, we do, through this lower fees, because the infrastructure has already been there to a large degree, they can avail those services at a lower cost that exist today. And people have, generally, when you look at our service growth, we're slowly ramping up, we're about 3,000 some odd connections a year, we're bringing in new connections. Roughly about 50% plus or minus is coming from the infill area. So their growth is happening. For example, the Golden One Center, that's an infill area, and so, there's lots happening. And, and we can try, and also, CD, I think, has exhausted its credits, I believe, or close to it, the Economic Development Bank credits that the regional sand has put in place for a long time. I mean, we're probably one of the few agencies that have been very forthcoming in terms of helping in, in a way, and I was mentioning that the, the affordable housing, we waive for 200 units, and there's also deferrals we do. For those that cannot afford, we actually have a three- and five-year deferrals with very little interest that they actually can defer our fees. So we have a lot of programs to help, to the extent we can. Fully understanding that we have to comply with Prop. 18, we can't use rate revenue for much of any of these things because of Prop. 18 constraints, and we also have to think about the Government Core 661313, there's some constraints there, too. So again, I can't answer that exact question or the example that you brought up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah. Will the new plant, when it's finished, be able to handle the drastic changes with, I mean, we had drought, 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 flood, is it, will that be able to handle the flooding better when it's done than right now? I know we have some problems with the overflow on some things, so.
The, the plant, so, oil flows, first of all, let me address the plant site. Plant has the capacity, and we should be able to, although this last storms, we have seen flows that I hadn't seen in my 21-year career here, almost 500 million gallons a day, twice. But we have the capacity to handle it, because there's a, in the picture that I put up there, there's a huge storage that we have onsite, we can store and handle it. The, we are improving that ability with this project, in terms of handling the peaks like what we're seeing. In terms of the treatment process, we should be fine. Normally, we have, on, on an average basis, we have plenty of capacity. We have capacity for probably the next 40 years. We're not increasing capacity with this, with this, largely, we're not increasing capacity. What we're seeing spills, some of them, which I don't know if you read the news article on, on Saturday, it is because of the intense rains in a local areas, not our entire system, it can overwhelm the system. So the pipelines are not designed to handle the kinds of flows that we've seen, for example, in the Rio Linda area, which is where we had issues. So what that article didn't necessarily reflect is, so, from Sacramento Sewer District's perspective, there were no spills from, by the way, from the regional sand. Regional sand had no spill whatsoever. If regional sand had spilled, usually these are large spills, because it's, our pipes are large, three-foot diameter to 10 to 12-foot diameter pipes. The Sacramento Sewer District, where we had spills about 400,000 gallons during the same period, we handled billions of gallons of water. So if you had spilled a 400,000 gallons out of billions of gallons, it's a very small amount, and even these are more when a lot of rain is happening. Having said that, we will look at, after the storms are done, look at the system, if there are areas that we need to make improvements, we'll make them, separate from this project. So we're always looking at that, to make those changes.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 16.3, receive fiscal year 2016-17 mid-year financial report and adopt resolution number 37-2017 and amending the 2016-17 operating budget.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Kim Duran-Carajorgio, City's Administrative Services Director. So I'm here this evening to present the mid-year financial report and the proposed 2016-17 budget amendment. I know the council has participated, we've had several budget study sessions recently, so a lot of this information you've heard already, so I'm just going to give a high-level overview this evening of what was presented in the staff report. This is the first mid-year financial report that the City Council has heard. It's, mid-year is typically a good time to have a check-in and see where city finances are, and given that we adopt a two-year budget here in the city, we're about a year and a half off from when the budget was adopted, so a lot can happen in a year and a half, and this is an opportunity to kind of check in on that. What we look at at mid-year is basically looking at city finances in comparison to prior fiscal years, given that finances are highly cyclical, and so they tend to trend similarly from year to year. So overall, city finances are trending positively at the mid-year point. The revenue budget for fiscal year 2016-17 was increased about $580,000 over the prior year to a total budget of $47.8 million. I'm going to walk through, just highlight a few of our key revenue sources. Property tax, which is our second-largest revenue source, the budget was set about $500,000 higher than the prior year. The mid-year point, we don't receive our first installment of property tax until January, so the mid-year point doesn't tell us anything, because we haven't received any revenues yet. However, we do have a lot of information that we received from the county at this point, and every indication is that we will reach or exceed the property tax budget for this fiscal year. Sales tax is the city's largest revenue source, and you've heard recently, we've had one particular sales tax revenue generator that's no longer in the city. So that decline has been offset, has offset some of the gains we've seen in other areas, although overall, we have budgeted conservatively, and do believe even with those shifts and changes that we will still achieve the budget for sales tax for this fiscal year. Utility users' tax is another revenue source, where in recent years, a lot of agencies have seen some declines in this area. This is primarily driven by conservation, water conservation, energy conservation becoming more popular, as well as changes in the telecommunications industry. So each year, we've kind of seen UUT get shipped away, and so we're seeing UUT run slightly below this point last year, but we do think we will be pretty close to budget. One of the highlights for the general fund budget right now is transient occupancy tax, TOT. The city is benefiting from many guests coming in, the business community here is strong, and so we've had a lot of people at the hotels in the city. And looking at it, we have seen about a 13% jump year over year in the city non-annexation area, and then we saw 11% decline in the annexation area as a result of a particular hotel that was closed down for renovation for six months of the year. So those two areas fare differently, but overall, when you combine those two, TOT is still up about 3.6%. So those are some of the highlight, those are the highlights on the revenue side. Moving over to the expenditure side, the 2016-17 budget on the expenditure side increased about $250,000 to $47.4 million. At the mid-year point, expenditures are at about 31% of budget, which is well below the 50% kind of anticipated level, and that's really the result of just timing delays, services. We have a lot of contracts in place, and so services are rendered and performed, but we don't necessarily pay those until a month or two later, so there is some timing delays there resulting in that number. Overall, the expenditures are up over the prior fiscal year, as the city continues to make progress in filling many of the key positions that were vacant at this time during last fiscal year. So as those positions are filled, we're starting to see our salaries and benefits start to get up to where the budget, anticipated budget level is. Overall, our expenditures are being maintained well within our budget, and also, I'll point out, well within our projected revenue for this fiscal year. We are proposing a few budget amendments this evening, two in particular, and again, similar to what I said earlier, this is the result of just projects and contracts that were not anticipated when the city initially adopted the budget in July of 2015. So there's a handful of contracts that have come before the council over the course of the fiscal year, which we are recommending amending the budget for, and, and again, those will be covered by anticipated general fund revenues. Jumping over very quickly to the Community Enhancement Fund program, this is the second year in which the city, full year in which the city is receiving Measure H Community Enhancement Fund revenues. As of the mid-year point, the city had received $2.9 million, which is about $800,000 above the same time last year. Much of that is a result of the end of the triple flip, so sales tax is being received differently this year, although we do, we are seeing a jump up in Community Enhancement Fund revenues. So overall, we are anticipating right now, we'll receive about $7.2 to $7.3 million in sales tax revenue from Measure H. And on the expenditure side, we've expended about $2.7 million as of the mid-year point, which is 1.7 million higher than last fiscal year. So evident that the program is off the ground, and also, the cumulative effect of multiple years now on top of each other with expenditures being incurred. So that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Just kind of curious to, can you clarify about that triple flip? You said it's gone now, so that's the reason we're back to over to 7.3 or 7.2?
Oh, must we go through the triple flip?
No, just...
We've all lived through it. It's a joke.
No, you may have, but essentially, getting more money out of it, I thought, okay, it's, you know...
So I want to clarify, we're not getting more money out of it, it's really timing differences. And so the manner in which the triple flip, the city got paid when the triple flip was in, in effect, there was timing differences in the receipt of revenues, whereas now, we're back to getting monthly installments, and so that's really the, the difference between one year over the other.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, I didn't understand that, I thought, you know, okay.
We're getting the same revenues quicker. Is that what your basis said?
Essentially, yes.
We're not waiting as long to get our money.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I will move approval of the staff recommendation that we receive the 2016-17 mid-year financial report and adopt resolution 37-2017, amending the 2016-2017 operating budget.
Have a motion?
Second?
We have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
And for the record, Councilmember Schocklin is absent this evening.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agendas items. Council requests for future agenda items. Any? I see none, so we will move to adjourn to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we do not require a closed session this evening. We had anticipated the possibility of developments that we have not had. We look forward to discussing that item with you at a future council meeting.
Then we are adjourned.
Can't go home this early.